All right. Welcome to those online. And with us this morning, this is the work session. For the Weaver County Board of Commissioners, today is Monday, May 22nd, it is 12:05. PM, we're going to start. With an approval of minutes for our work session held on May 15th, I'm Commissioner Gage for I'll be cheering with me is Commissioner. Sharon Bolos, Commissioner Jim Harvey is. Out of the office today, maybe chiming in later online, we'll see, so I'd start with the. Approval of the minutes for that work session.
Move to approve.
Second, all those in favor. Aye. Minutes are approved, let's go to our next agenda item, which is discussion regarding ARPA funding for the Powder Mountain Water and Sewer District, Sean. Wilkinson's with us, Scott Park, John Bond is not with him, John Bond's actually out of town. What I understand, Greg Sig Miller. Greg's here, who are you with, Greg?
GB Engineers in Powder Mountain.
Okay, Gary Vance. And Carrie Zinger. Okay.
Carrie's online.
Okay, great. All right, there's Gary online, okay, let's start, Sean, you're gonna take the lead on this.
I will actually let, well, let me, let me say that we did receive an updated ARPA application or a new.
Right, I saw that come through.
Yeah, from Powder Mountain last week.
Right.
And I will let them explain what that is and and. Make their request here today, so.
And I think we got, do you get a copy of that as well? Yeah, I think we've got copies in that. Yep. Go ahead.
Greg Signor. Powder Mountain just recently. Sought out for some new engineering help, JB. So we're doing a lot of work for them right now, I do have online Gary Vance, Gary Vance is the engineer. Who put together so a lot of this application, he's worked on the siding study. Gary, did you want to kind of open that up a little bit?
Sure, can you guys hear me?
Yep, we can hear you, go ahead.
Sorry, I can't get my video to work, but I'm in, I'm in the car at a construction meeting in Tooele, so nothing glamorous, but um. Yeah, just regarding this application. There's a lot of needs there for the district. But we decided. Probably the best fit for this application would be to. Improve their existing lagoons, they've had some issues this. Spring snowmelt season with infiltration and inflow. Which we appreciate Weaver County helping with their early previous package, that's gonna help resolve those issues. But in the meantime, we are requesting other lagoon improvements such as raising the dykes. Lining them. Transfer structures. So they can isolate cells. Access to the, to the ponds in the winter time, a better access road. So. There's a whole myriad of improvements that are needed just to get these things. Back to treating their existing wastewater and allowing them to. Bring on new connections in the near future. As growth occurs or what have you, so. So the purpose of this request is to improve their existing facilities for treatment. And then later on. When the district proceeds a mechanical treatment plant. We would use those facilities as winter storage of type one reclaimed water. For reuse effluent, so. Everything we do as part of this project would be also utilized in the future. As when they become reuse ponds. So that's kind of the, the big. Fifty thousand foot view, it also has money in there for kind of a regional sewer lift station that's down lower in the valley. You know, to allow others to connect in if needed, so.
Okay. So any questions? And my understanding, the request was around five million, am I?
Yeah, five million out of that basically ten million dollar cost, so half.
So it's about a half third. Is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
According to that application they sent in, nine twenty eight million is the total cost, at which they're asking five million from the state. My, so looking through their application, it said they're, they'll get the rest of it either through their district fund balance, loans are grants from the Division of Water Quality or other matching funds, so. You guys, have you identified what that would be, but just like if we give you the five million, then you'll find the rest of it?
We're just getting started on it.
Okay.
We, we, you know, as soon as all the runoff started coming down the canyon, we started to realize we need to put some love and attention into this. I, we do want to emphasize that none of the work that we're doing with this, very little of this work. Is lost once we go to the MBR, because we intend on using those ponds for reuse. It's not like it's, you know, five years down the road when the MBR is put, or the sewer treatment plants put in place, all this would be wasted. That's not going to be the case at all, because, you know, like I say, we'll be able to use the forest main, we'll be able to use the gravity line, we'll be able to use. For secondary water, and so we want to make sure that that point was well understood, but.
And all of this in the application you feel is needed. Right now.
Yes.
Yes, we're not, we're not building. To accommodate future use, even though it will help for future growth and future. Connections, it's needed right now for existing.
It, it's needed to actually, see our first ARPA grant that we got from you guys helps a ton as far as getting rid of the infiltration.
Yes.
And, and so this here, this request we're bringing to you today is more for. Making sure the lagoons are able to handle what they were designed to handle, and there is capacity in those existing lagoons. The numbers escape me, and I don't know if you've got those handy, Gary, but there is some capacity in those existing lagoons that will help. Tight us over while we get the treatment plant put into place.
Yeah, this is all, like you mentioned, this is all to address existing issues, so. You know, this spring the ponds. Spilled, you know, we don't want that to ever happen again, so this will. Resolve that. And allow, you know, it's needed for existing, but it will also allow some new connections. As needed, so.
So as I'm looking at the application, it says that it allows you to put two hundred existing septic systems onto this. Under the system, and then also says. A number of sewer connections to be added, another seven hundred, so is this seven hundred new connections? Or is this seven hundred existing?
We could take on, you know, we're recommending to do a full treatment master plan to. Firm up those numbers, but roughly. It should be able to take on. Roughly seven hundred new connections, which should last a few years, you know, five plus years until a new mechanical facility is constructed. So this is just kind of interim improvements, but then like Greg says. It'll be used in the future as well for reuse ponds.
Well, I'm just trying to make sure that I understand, so is it, there's only two hundred users now, I mean, how many users do you have now, plus the two hundred you're gonna pull on from. From the septic tanks to it, like what percentage is that, seven hundred of new additional connections? In terms of the total capacity that you can handle?
Here, you want to touch on that, or you want me to?
I think they're about three hundred connections now, is that right, Carrie?
Give or take, yeah.
Yeah, so.
About three hundred now.
If we reduce that infiltration and inflow, that'll. Provide a lot of capacity for. Kind of interim use for the next five years. And.
Some of this.
Go ahead, Greg.
Go ahead, well, I was just gonna say, some of this we're still kind of getting to the bottom of, you know, the, the guns have been under ice. Until they flooded early, about a month ago, earlier in the spring, so some of this we're still trying to get to the bottom of that information, the alignment that we show. Goes down in the lower valley, and that will help to bring in other connections as they. As they're, as it goes past some of these homes, but that's, that's the intent of that, I don't know, is that helping answer your question?
There's three hundred connections that use it now, then you hope to pull two hundred existing sewer. Connection or sewer systems onto that, so you'd be at five hundred users now, and then you're building enough capacity that you could add another seven hundred on top of that. I'm just trying, that's, it's a question, is that?
No, no, that's, that's a good question, and like I say, some of these numbers we're, we're still working on, we haven't done a sludge judge. Test, it's the name of a test to do, to see what, what capacity there, there is, you know, there's some other details that we're working on, we, we. We're, we've kind of honed in on the siding study, we, we've worked with the property owner to work that direction, a lot of this is moving. Very, very quickly. But those numbers are, are fairly vague for a reason, because we're still working on some of that.
That's roughly, you know, what we think. In the next five years, you know, number of new connections that could occur. For example. If, if we build that proposed lift station down lower in the valley. Some developers have indicated they bring their sewer line over to tie in, and that's kind of in their plans, and we'd be able to accommodate that for. The next five year period.
And Sean, this may be a question for you, but with the other proposed lift station in the area, how do those two lift stations, this one that they're talking about interact with other ones that are potentially coming?
These, the Wolf Creek Lift Station and this lift station are separated from each other, so this could potentially take. Sewer coming from Liberty and the north side of the valley, whereas. That Wolf Creek Sewer System is more for the south end and what's in the Wolf Creek area right now. Now Nordic Valley could potentially go either way. But. We don't know that yet.
So this would really be a secondary system. Looking at Wolf Creek right now, this is a secondary system to handle more north.
Correct.
Wolf Creek would handle more, the four way stop, Old Town, Newtown, and that area is the way that I see it with, and that would be with the lift station. That we talked about last week.
That's exactly right.
Is that correct? Is that how you see, so tell me a little bit about what your. Time schedule is, you know, I'm sure you understand our time schedule in terms of. Our requirements and also under the Treasury Act.
Yeah, you know, this request we have right now before you. This is as quick as, as we can get it done. On the sewer lagoons, as, as we mentioned. Didn't handle the spring runoff, thankfully, that's kind of backing off a little bit now, and so as soon as we can get equipment up there, we want to start working on, on this aspect of it. The future time schedule on this, the, the district is, has indicated they want to go forward with a. Mechanical treatment plant that will handle a lot of that into the future, that typically takes about five years to put one of those in, by the time you get funding and design and approval and, and. Bidding and construction, everything else, you're about into that five years, and that's why we've shot for that window of five years, that these existing. Lagoons have to hold over for that period, as soon as we get the, the mechanical in, then of course these shift over, become secondary water. Retention reservoir for, for, for the reuse water that we've. Identified coming out of the MBR, so yeah, ASAP on this request, five years on the future.
Yeah. Because our time report is basically three years.
Yeah.
So we have to have, whatever refund ARPA needs to be complete by. January twenty sixth, right?
Cash out the door by twenty twenty six, yeah, obligated by twenty twenty four, so you'd have this project done, you know, very, very, very latest June of twenty twenty six, like done, project closed down, reconciled and everything.
Yep, and that's no problem, the bulk of this project is the lagoon improvements, as if you look at the cost opinion. And those could be done in twenty twenty five, they're pretty quick burn. And like we mentioned, these are all to address existing issues. Whether or not growth or anything occurs, all this needs to be done in terms of the lagoon improvements.
Okay.
And it'll be done in twenty twenty five, constructed.
Is that laid out in your proposal? In terms of the timing and.
So the proposal said it would be completed by December twenty twenty four, so they said start design July through December twenty three, approvals from the state, January twenty four, construction starting February twenty four. And then completion by December twenty four, so maybe that, I assume they're just rough estimates.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's rough. If, if we really had to push it, we can get it all done next summer.
Okay. And of the, near ten million dollar costs, so about two million of that's for the lift station, or two and a half million for the lift station, and the rest of it would be for the lagoon improvements, is that about right?
Yeah.
That's correct, and, and a lot of that force main would be reused for type one effluent to get over to the ponds, and so again, even the force main isn't a waste. It would be reused.
Okay. Reused for reuse. Sound like a poem. Say it does. So what's your, what's your plan in terms of, obviously, we're a ways from the potential nine point eight, ten million dollars. What's your other revenue source? Because, you know. Yeah. If you're gonna start this project, obviously, you want to make sure you have the end game in mind of as far as funding. So do, and I know that Roy talked about. Going to legislature this next year and asking. For some money through DWQ or whatever. Yeah. Which is potentially, you know, a, a good source, but that's, that's no guarantee.
No.
Yeah, so I'd say, you know, we all, we all wish Roy, Roy was here, he's in Europe unfortunately right now, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, our goal is to, our plan is to get a planning advance from DWQ and, and finalize a master plan that can be used for funding a capital improvements plan. And go to DWQ and get money for the remaining, but that being said, the bulk of this, you know, five million dollars roughly is for. The existing ponds that needs to happen. You know, even if there's zero growth, it needs to happen, so.
Got it.
The, the way it goes with funding is you, as you know, you identify as many sources as you can, you pursue each of them independently, hopefully, matching will work. With, with several options, and, and so we're at that phase right now, you're the first that we're coming to seeking funding.
Yeah.
Do you have any cash or resources that you could put in from, from your own district, or levy a bond or anything like that from the district itself, or are you hoping to be able to fund all this from grants or contributions?
Carrie, do you want to answer that?
We have a potential source that we've been talking to as far as bonding goes. I'm still waiting to hear back on some information, it's just been conversation and, and, you know, paperwork back and forth if they do that out, we do have impact fees, like you said, with the capitalist facilities plan. That will be put into place, we do have some. Impact fees now, but nothing like what you're talking about, it would have to be a, it would have to be a bond or a grant or something to that effect, but we are in the process of, like I said, a couple of other avenues, I just haven't heard back yet.
Yeah, so you weren't looking at those resources, huh? Good, good, no, I think that's. That's wise, as you look at the size of project, obviously.
Good.
Okay, what else? Give us what you can. Well, so you understand our process.
Yeah.
So you've turned in your application, go through Sean, John Bond actually is working. Couple of his people that we reviewed those.
Yeah.
I, do we have a? A meeting set up to review, we've got two or three applications. Maybe, maybe more than that.
We, we had a couple of additional ones come in, so we actually paused, we were going to schedule for today's work session, paused that, so we're gonna do it, I think, on your next work session, I don't know if you're gonna have one next week or the week after that.
Okay.
But we wanted to be able to review this application plus the other, I think, three that came in.
Okay.
And so we're gonna present to you everything, we've contacted everyone, we've already funded, and we've got the information that we were requested to give, so we have everything we funded, everyone we said no to originally, and then these new ones that have come in, so we're ready, just about ready.
So I would say within a couple of weeks, we'd be able to schedule. That, and, and just to be fair, we mentioned other people, what we've done is, we've gone back to the applications that we have approved. To see where they are in the process, are they meeting the time requirements, are they on schedule, dollar wise, you know, do they need more money to complete it, and then we'll be looking at, I guess, four potentially other. Projects as well. Trying to. Nail this down by sometime this summer, so we know that kind of the final direction we're headed.
Yeah.
We just, we're very aware that. That was, that January twenty sixth, we're actually moving ahead of that about six months, so. We, we, we're telling people we'd like a plan in place by January twenty twenty four, for sure, right?
Well, we're saying, we need to have, so by December thirty first, twenty twenty four, it's gonna be all spent, so we're saying everybody has until June thirtieth of twenty twenty four.
Yeah, yeah.
So June thirtieth of twenty twenty four.
Obligated.
Obligated, June thirtieth of twenty twenty six to spend, because we need that extra six months. In case you can't spend it all for some reason, we still have a chance to go through and reallocate it a little bit, enough time to do something with it.
Since, so that's, that's what our time schedule is, and. They make sure we stick to it, so.
Yeah, just, just one last comment. Yeah, just one last comment regarding the service area map, kind of the second figure, if you guys have that, but it's just. It allows them to sewer a huge area from Nordic all the way to the north and all the way east to the mountaintop, Powder Mountain. You know, it's kind of a one time. Opportunity, it seems like. Everyone's pointing towards doing something there in Ogden Valley, and with this ARPA has given the ability to kind of plant the seed or get some seed money. For kind of a visionary project like this, so we appreciate your guys' consideration on this and. Appreciate your help, so.
Yeah, well, we appreciate you taking the time to put the proposal together, obviously, this benefits. Ogden Valley, the extent we can take more people off septics and put them on some type of. Regional plan, makes a lot of sense for our groundwater and other things, so. We're, we're, we're paying a lot of attention to that area. Good. Thank you, Commissioner Bolos, any questions?
I don't have any, thanks.
Okay, thank you very much, thanks, Gary, appreciate being with us.
Thanks, everybody, we'll see ya.
Thanks, guys, for coming in, Carrie, thank you. Okay. We are. A little ahead of schedule. So let's take five minutes. Before we start and. Grab something to eat. You're gonna saunter for. Okay, we're back uh. In session, this is the twelve thirty. Fortune of our made agenda, item three discussion regarding the tax review committee recommendations, Dakota worse with us, Lynn Taylor. Ricky Hatch will be with us shortly. Uh, Dakota, you didn't take the lead on this? Or Lynn?
He's, so I'm gonna head it off to Dakota, I'll give a little uh, little preamble. This part for a little while longer. So uh, tax sale every year is the least favorite part of the job, but uh, folks that have been to Lincoln under taxes for a while. Uh, one of our statutory responsibilities is to sell that property at tax sale if the taxes aren't current by the day of the tax sale. And that is this Thursday.
Oh, coming up.
Yes, wow, now, one of the things that we do, since we really don't want to sell people's homes, uh, businesses or whatever, is we work with them. And many times, they, they know that they're delinquent, the treasurer's office does a great job of letting them know they're delinquent. But it doesn't become pressing until the tax sale comes up, and many times they don't have enough time to really come up with a solution. So sometimes we grant extensions if they have a good plan. Um, and so the first extensions, we uh. I won't say they're easy to do, but uh, like if somebody owns their home and they've got a good plan, we'll just do the first extension. Second extensions are a bit harder and usually requires uh, a bit of a. Uh, like a payment history and confidence that it's going to get resolved before the next one. Uh, I've, in the ten years I've been doing this, I've never seen a third extension, but we've got our first one of those today.
Third extension?
Yes.
We're talking, are these annual year extensions?
Since we're, since we can only do a tax sale within a certain window every year.
Right.
Uh, if there's an extension, sometimes people will say, well, I can pay it within three months, like, well, that's great, but. If you don't, you still have to wait till the next year to do the tax sale. Uh, so in this case of two of them, and Dakota will go into details on what these are, um, two of them are. I wouldn't want to call them routine, but they're. It's pretty straightforward. Uh, is the Y word, that's, so they've also been through the tax review committee.
Okay.
And two of them had a unanimous recommendation to the commissioners. To approve a second extension. Uh, the, the third one. We started the meeting expecting that there would not be a third extension, but there was some additional information that came out over the course of that meeting, which Dakota will go over. That the tax review committee recommended in favor of an extension. On a three to one vote. I, I was the one dissenting, but. I was not disappointed the way that it came out, and you'll see why when it came out, I just. I feel like our office could fully support it, even though personally I was happy that it went the way that it did.
Okay.
Uh, so with that, um, I'll hand it over to Dakota. Maybe talk about uh. Going bottom to top on the paper that we handed you, this is a summary. Of what each of the three situations are, and we wanted to give you a heads up, these are going to be on the agenda tomorrow. But um, and what you'll be voting on is whether or not to approve or deny the request from the taxpayer.
Right.
And then the tax review committee's recommendation is along with that, all three of them ultimately were recommending approval, but it's up to the commission whether or not we will. Grant the extensions as requested.
Got it.
But we wanted to give you, because these are kind of big deals, give you. A heads up in the work session before, so you can think about it, ask questions and everything before we actually get a commission meeting tomorrow. So it's not random.
Yeah, and we appreciate that.
With that being said, um. Going bottom up, we've got Kim and Kelly Jonas, who inherited this property from their late mother and were up for their tax sale last year. Um, they have a fifty percent interest each in the property. And an understanding was reached last year that they. Pay fifty percent of the delinquent taxes to remove it from that tax sale if they were afforded that first ex- extension. Um, Kelly Jonas has. Gone above and beyond to fill his obligations, his twin brother Kim. Has experienced some severe health impairments. That are preventing him from seeking gain for employment and ultimately paying off. The delinquent taxes, he made a twenty five hundred dollar payment to leave the balance at roughly eleven hundred, and he's. Reached out to me alongside his brother with a plan to pay that, to avoid needing an extension next year. And ultimately being. Having the property be sold in that regard, so with the effort that they've made. And how routinely they followed up with me, I felt it was a no reiner for us to recommend an approval for a second extension. Cause they've shown a good faith effort to, to get off of that tax sale and, and keep current with those property taxes.
Where's that home located?
That home is located.
That's the fifteen, sixty, fifty seven. Usually have.
Fifteen, that, is that Roy? Could be.
Uh, it might be.
Okay, somewhere else, alright, that's okay.
I think it is.
Alright.
But that one was pretty clear cut for me, um, the next one that we had.
Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
Did you talk to him about the fact that? Once this year comes, they don't pay it before November, that they'll have to pay it prior year.
Yep, first, at length, so the way I've. Positioned a conversation with them is where the one brother's not been able to make payments and we're up to the line, second extension. Is that there's an understanding that the. Other brother will pay the ones, he can get it off the tax sale, but they have a plan in place to pay it in next month or two. If they're granted this extension, so they're aware that. It has to be paid by November or else they're in the same position next year, it's not gonna.
Who's living in the house?
They both are.
Okay, they're sharing the house then, okay.
It's uh, it's in Ogden on fourteen hundred south.
Okay, alright, thank you.
And I just asked that, Commissioner, you probably already know this, but when they're five years delinquent. Um, if. The state law requires that the payment go to the most current year.
Right, right.
People aren't persistently in.
And they understand that. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we've had probably dozens of conversations on that topic, so at this point, it's, it's hammered home, we understand the urgency and.
So it looks like they're making progress.
Yeah.
They've been in communication.
Mm-hmm, they're down to eleven hundred left and it's paid off.
Commissioner Bollos, any questions on that? Okay. And, and the committee recommended. Second extension.
Those are unanimous recommendation. Uh, and typically what the committee looks at is their uh, their intent to pay, that they've got a plan, they've got a payment history. Uh, things like that, um. Great, and it's, they checked all those boxes in this case.
Then all that, no other unanimous. Recommendation for approval is a property owned by Cecilia Gomez. But the extension's being requested by her sister Rosely Mitchell because the property owner passed away at the end of twenty sixteen. Okay, that property is ultimately up for tax sale in. Last year's tax sale because it was five years delinquent at that point. They received an extension at that time as they were working through probate court. Um, as of May eighth. Rosely Mitchell was appointed the representative for the property. Um, and she is now listing it for sale to bring the delinquent balance current. And I actually had someone call me today to inform me that there's a per sale sign out in front of the property, so I anticipate that that'll. Be taken care of. Pretty swiftly.
Okay, yeah, that should cure the problem.
And that would largely, because probate process takes a while, um.
Yeah.
Didn't even have ownership of the property for a while till that was taken care of.
Right. Okay.
And then.
That one makes good sense. So talk to us about the other one then.
Yes, so our, our uh. Third extension request for Juan Espinoza Junior, um. The property was previously owned by Juan Espinoza Senior, which we discovered during the tax review committee meeting last Monday. And at the time of that discussion, the property's been delinquent for eleven years, back to twenty twelve. What would happen is. Espinoza Senior would be notified he's up for the tax sale, he would file for, for bankruptcy. It would then be dismissed, and it would routinely happen year after year up until twenty twenty one. And twenty twenty two, so last year they received a second extension. Um, Juan Espinoza Junior was present for the tax review committee meeting at that time. And gave an understanding that urgency in that meeting, he then obtained ownership of all his. All of his father's properties in February of this year. And. Previously, three properties were routinely up for our tax sale, he's brought two of those current. And has a plan in place to bring the third current with a refinance uh, through a commercial lender. Uh, we have a letter signed by that lender stating that that loan will close sometime around July first of this year. And Juan has done. An amazing job of communicating with us. And outlining his plan, and I think his actions. Prior to our meeting on last Monday are indicative of someone who really has. A good head on their shoulders and the drive to bring these taxes current, granted, they are totaling roughly twenty five thousand, so it's a substantial amount. But he's got a lender in place, those things take time, where he obtained ownership in February, so three months. Five months if it closes in July is indicative of. That process taking the time it needs to take, and. I think we. Payments that he's made on the other two properties. The fact that he's working so diligently with us to outline his plan. And. Show that effort goes a long way for me to agree that we should. Approve a third extension. But.
So we're talking three separate properties.
So in this case, it's, it's one. Historically, it was three.
Okay.
That he would um. File bankruptcy.
Oh.
And then have it dismissed to avoid losing.
But now we're just talking one property.
We're talking one because the sons come in, bought his dad out.
Okay.
And is making the actual payments to fulfill his obligation as a taxpayer.
Okay.
And the property in question is actually a restaurant. Now, that he, you and his family are running, that's his primary source of income is the restaurant that. Is up here now that he's taken it over from his dad.
So the one we're talking about is the rest.
Correct, okay.
Okay. Alright. This is, and that was the three to one vote?
Correct.
Sure, right of redemption with these, do they have a certain uh. After the tax sale to come in and pay and vote and stun and over with that?
Correct, well, and, and so as soon as, as soon as the property goes up for auction. There's no ability to redeem it after that point, if it goes. Once people start bidding on it, it's done at that point.
Yeah.
They can appeal it, of course. But.
Can, but.
There has to be some kind of a right or.
Okay, so. Do we have any that are on the. Scheduled to, to be sold at tax? Sure.
Um. So you, you mean like, like any other than these?
Anything other than.
So we certainly have others that have yet to be redeemed, and projecting will probably have somewhere in the ballpark between six to eight properties go to tax sale.
Okay.
Um, none of those properties are any of it having resonance on top of them, so we won't be displacing anybody.
Right.
Based on my projections, we'll certainly have odd parcels of land.
Yeah.
Aren't developable.
More of those strange parcels, John.
Oh, boy, yeah.
I tell you what, people are excited about those strange parts.
You get those calls too?
I get.
Yeah.
Tons of those. So. Yeah, things are looking good in that we're not gonna kick anyone out of their homes for delinquent taxes, and that's why we wanted to read these three specifically in front of you guys before you vote tomorrow. So you have that scope. And we're on bringing it to you and forcing you to make a decision on the floor, so.
Good, have you received uh, information from the, on the refinance, does that look like it's a real deal?
It is, we have a signed letter from the lender.
Okay.
Um, don't have much more than that, but I've researched, they are a legitimate lender. And. That letter is indicative that there's a loan in process.
I can't remember that section of code, but I think, if we do an extension, that's one year extension.
Correct, it's right, what we're doing is we're taking it off of the tax sale for this year.
Right.
And it just comes up again next year, if it's, if it's not taken care of.
Yeah. Basically gives them one year to cure it, there's no, we can't say, hey, you got till September.
Right, we, we could theoretically say that, but since we're, so the code only allows us to hold a tax sale. Um, right, I think it's, it's between like April and May is when we're able to do that, so once that window closes, we can't have a tax sale again till the next year.
Okay. Okay. Commissioner Bollos, questions, comments? Concerns? Okay, well, I. Eleven years seems like a long time for somebody to.
This February.
They go right, and this, so this is the last year, last year's tax review committee, when um. Juan Espinoza Senior came in, the son came in with him. Um, I had gotten to know Mr. Espinoza a little bit over the previous years, we actually had, because we saw a pattern of the bankruptcies.
Yeah.
But then bankruptcies wouldn't get followed through to get dismissed, the attorneys actually helped us and getting a stay on that for a couple of years.
Okay.
Where if a bankruptcy got filed again. We could still sell it, cause normally if somebody's in bankruptcy, we're prohibited from selling.
Right.
Cause judge gave us a stay, and that's when uh, we started talking about extensions, he came up with a plan, got two of the three current. Uh, and it looked like the third one wasn't going to, and the son, who we met last year, stepped in, said he was going to be good to help his dad. He was the only one that showed up, the last one says, I'm now taking everything over. I'm working on getting everything fixed up, I just need more time to get the third property taken care of. Uh, and then. Presenting all that to the tax review committee, the majority of the members recommended, okay, it looks like a legitimate plan. It's not the same person who's done the bankruptcies and everything else, uh, he has shown that he is capable of making, he's got two out of the three. Uh, because we don't want to sell his business and. Have that loss in the community, we go ahead and recommend. One more time, because it's a new person is really what it came down to, if it had been the same person, we would recommend to know.
Yeah.
Yeah, you're dealing with a different actor here, okay.
Were the other two properties uh, homes?
One was a home, the other was a bakery that is. Adjoining the restaurant that we're talking about here, um. So he does have a vested interest to. Keep his source of income, but also retain his employees as well, so. I think that.
Where's the restaurant?
Trying to remember. It's on Washington, it's. It's Rita's Bakery and. It's a little Mexican restaurant next door, I don't remember what it's called. It's like, um.
Twenty sixth then.
It's, it's, it's kind of around there.
Oh, so it's right down. I think I know what you're talking about, yeah. Just down twenty twenty six, twenty seven. I'm thinking of the right spot.
It's kind of by that Maverick, like across the street.
Uh-huh, yeah. Okay. Alright, anything else?
No, he um, might be there tomorrow at commission meeting. Uh, when we.
The son or?
The, the son, yeah, the one who's now taking responsibility for all the properties, he might be, be there.
Okay.
Um, if he can make it to plead his case and.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, we don't know for sure if, if he will.
He did tell me he'd be in attendance, he. Told me both, but I, he is fairly busy, so I know. Might have something going on, but for sure, he said he'd at least be there for the commission meeting.
Great, okay.
Rita's Bakery is right next to Smash It on thirty first.
Yeah.
Thirty first, okay. Okay. Oh, yeah, yeah.
The, the joining must be on the back.
Thirty first in Washington?
Uh, yeah.
Got it.
And so it's mostly just informational, so you're armed with that information, you've got. Same time to think about what direction you'd like to go with that, and whatever you, uh, so what'll be on the agenda is the request from each property owner. Uh, requesting an extension, so if you vote yes, we will grant the extension, we'll pull up for the tax sale, um. And give them the rest of the year to sort that out, and if, if you vote no, then we will plan to. Sell it on Thursday.
Thursday, okay, and we, we vote on these individual, these individual requests.
Yeah, there'll be uh, action items tomorrow.
Got it.
So we'll have a chance to discuss again, I'll probably give an abbreviated version of, of these. Tomorrow.
Good, look forward to it. Yeah, thanks, guys. Thank you, thanks Lynn, Dakota, Ricky, we'll grab some uh. Lunch here.
Thank you, thank you.
Sean, we're in good time, we're eight minutes ahead of schedule.
Very good.
Wow. Amazing what we can do without already here.
Sharon, I haven't put on your requests to get information about your elected. Sharon, I haven't put on your requests to get information about your elected.
The interest of. Making sure that those that come online, uh, let's now go to our closed session, well, since we. Are in a closed session to discuss purchase, exchange, or lease property, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, all those in favor?
Right.
We're now in a closed session, so I'm going to shut this down. Okay, welcome back. Our online doesn't accrue as anybody, but we're now at our one thirty. Meeting regarding fee ordinance amendment for weed, weed scout, Wilkins, Sean Wilkinson's, Joe Hadley, Bart Craig in Portland. Is here, and of course we got Joe Hadley, so. All right, so Sean.
Yes, thank you commissioners. So Cortland has been working with Bart and Joe and Riley to put together a fee ordinance associated with weed spraying services. So uh they sent that over, Cortland uh has has put the ordinance together, but we wanted to get it before you. Just to make sure that you're comfortable with how uh Bart and his team want to move forward with the cost. For their weed spraying services, but Bart, you want to just explain? Uh, what those costs might be and. How you're, why you're looking at that?
Sure. In previous, well, up until now, we charge sixty dollars an acre or sixty dollars an hour, excuse me, fifteen dollars an acre. The price of chemical is going up. Quite a bit, so I really felt like we needed to go to to uh thirty dollars an acre and stay at sixty bucks an hour. For time and equipment. That way, I mean, it's it's not hurting nobody, but we're not losing money either.
Sixty bucks, we we're not losing money at that, Joe?
No, no, sixty dollars an hour, that's for our labor.
Yeah, right.
To go out, but we had to up the chemical price.
We've talked about that.
They've gone up thirty percent, we haven't raised them in six years.
Oh, yeah, no, it's. So what are you suggesting for for acre?
Uh, thirty dollars now.
Or acres, excuse. Thirty bucks an acre.
Yeah, yeah, so.
Yeah.
What it says here, fifteen dollars per half acre plus thirty dollars per half hour, so. When you round those up to the full acres, that's what we're talking about, thirty dollars. Uh, per half acre and sixty dollars per half or per hour.
Okay.
Per acre and per hour, yeah.
Okay. Well, one side of me wonders if that's enough, knowing how I just, what I just spent for chemicals for my place, but. I'm gonna take your word for it. I mean, obviously, we want to have people take advantage of it, but. It's, we don't want to subsidize. Private landowners that, you know, you know, I'm going to call up the county and say, yeah, come up and do my places.
Right, right.
I I wouldn't do that because I.
Depending on which chemical, I mean, if you're going to spread it for like thistle milestone or something, try out.
True.
Pro rate that for what chemical we're using. Off of like two forty, which is.
Yeah.
More of the generic cheaper brand of chemical.
But what we're finding out is some of the more expensive chemicals are more effective on.
Right.
Certain, you know, like star thistle and some of these others.
Yeah.
So in my mind, we need to make a, make sure that we have an ability to say, look, we came in and did a full. Field to start this, so that was, you know, a hundred and twenty bucks a half gallon, that's going to be a little more. But I think as long as we have that flexibility.
Yep, I agree.
Does that make sense? Cause yeah, two four D, we want to try to. You know.
It's it's.
It's effective on certain things.
And it's cheap compared.
And it's cheap.
To milestone or.
Yeah.
Or Torone or something like that.
Right.
Cortland, how would you recommend?
So, yeah, how do we do that?
Do we want to do that based on the different types of weeds?
We could, I mean, we could do it based on the type of chemical that's used, I mean, we could split this out as detailed as you want. What was presented to me was the idea of just putting a flat fee on. And um that, I guess, would theoretically average out if we got it right. But if we want to split it into different chemicals or different types of weeds or something different, we could certainly do that. Just depends on how simple or. You want more rose in the table, that's all it is, really.
Well, if we, you know, we could split the difference, I guess, depending on Bart knows. You know, how much we. Spend on that we use for two to four D and how much, you know, what type of percentage weeds we would spray with the high end stuff. Maybe we just try to average that out so we're covered.
Yeah.
Let's go with the the more expensive one, because it's still going to be cheaper.
Yeah. Just do that. You think, do you think forty five bucks an acre?
I think people could still do that. I mean, we don't want to price ourselves out of the, out of the business, but we want to make it fair to us.
Yeah. I called Cash County and and uh Buck Elder County.
Yeah.
And the prices that I was, we were talking about earlier was in line with what they do.
Thirty bucks?
Yeah.
Okay.
But they also, if. They have such a big budget, if a landowner's in trouble and needing some chemical, they will just give it to him.
Right, that's a little different.
But.
Well, they're a little different.
That's it, they got grants. That's.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're they're giving away grant money.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, and they're a little different setup than we are, you know, they're doing larger parcels. Where we're in it, you know, we might do some acre, two acre parcels, they're going to go out and do twenty or thirty acre parcels, it's more effective to. To spray that than it is, and then the travel time to get, you know, from unincorporated lower to unincorporated upper. Again, we got to take that, you know, we got some travel time too, so I just want to make sure we're covered, so.
I think this will cover us. Do you?
I do, yeah. I I hate to have to come back next year. That's true.
So you think forty, forty five, what do you?
Let's go forty five.
Okay. Questions, so forty five dollars per acre?
Yes.
Do you like?
And sixty dollars per hour.
That's, to me, that's reasonable.
Or let's go forty, that that's 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 a hundred bucks an hour.
Yeah, you can do forty and sixty.
Saying sixty, that's a hundred dollars an hour. We're providing the equipment, material, labor, I think that's fair.
I don't think I can spray my fields for under forty, for under a hundred bucks an hour. Almost guarantee you.
So the reason I drafted it with half acre and half hour is Bart had mentioned that sometimes there might be a smaller.
Okay.
Job and you wouldn't necessarily feel like you'd need to cha- charge for the whole acre or the whole hour. Um, I don't know if that's really. A concern, we could write it as a minimum of a hundred, like based on a minimum of one acre and one hour. Or we can keep it at the half hour, half acre, where if it's a smaller job, they might only get charged. Twenty dollars for a half acre plus thirty dollars, they might only get charged fifty dollars, is that realistic?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So we could just say minimum fifty bucks.
Okay, so round up to the nearest.
Yeah.
Uh, and then it's going to be a minimum of fifty, but we change it to twenty for half acre, so forty an acre, okay. We can, that's.
With a minimum of fifty bucks per, yeah.
Okay, yeah, but since it's rounded up, it's always going to be a minimum of fifty, all we have to do is change the fifteen to the twenty then.
You, have you been spraying a lot of, a lot of ground that's less than an acre?
Yeah, little hand spray.
Yeah.
You know, they get a a little patch of scotch this.
Yeah.
You know. And and it's still cheaper to have us do than for them to.
No, see, all they got to do is go to IFA, pick up a, you know, a half gallon or a gallon or whatever. Walk out, you know, a hundred and sixty two bucks later, so, yeah, it's not cheap.
Well, Sean, I don't know who's running this through, but changing the fifteen to the twenty sounds like the only change there, right?
Okay, yeah, I think you're right.
Okay.
So you've got it up right there?
Yes.
Do you want to just make that change and then spend it out? And then I'll I'll make sure that we get it on the agenda and move it forward.
Yeah.
Perfect. Okay, thank you.
Great, appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Bart, you guys are doing a good job, Joe.
Thank you, great job.
You're doing a great job out there.
He's very proactive.
Going to be, should be an interesting year to see, it's a little bit late starting, but I think starting to come on heavy.
Yeah, I gotta get the valley.
Get up there and uh, yeah.
You you know what's fun to see is when you drive over the divide, you can see a definite line between the Dyer's Road where our sprayers can't reach.
Yeah.
So we are making it.
Oh, no. Yeah, and Dyer's Ward's a big one in the valley, I mean, Dyer's Ward's not big overall, but for the valley, it's big.
Yep.
I think part of it is people can recognize it.
They did, that's.
Know what exactly what it is.
That's.
They see a scotch thistle or.
Yeah.
Yellow star thistle, they don't know what it is.
No, you're exactly right, yeah, that yellow blossom stands out.
Stands out, yeah.
Those, thanks, guys.
Hey, thank you.
Appreciate all you do out there.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we'll we'll try and get that on for next Tuesday.
I think we should, yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Thanks for the launch.
You bet. Help yourself. Chris, did you get some chicken?
Yeah, thank you. Very much.
Bart does a great job, doesn't he?
Yes, he does. We've got a a great team out there.
Yeah, Bart's great. You know, now, the weed board, they're pretty engaged, I'm. You know. Tom Perbaro's been on there and there were some. People that weren't particularly thrilled, but he he brings a lot to the country, you know, with his farming background.
Absolutely.
And so that's all accounted for and updated, it's all accounted for and where we're at.
We are.
I'm going to steal the. The control.
Yes, so when you, when you want me to pop in, just let me know.
Mr. Mason? Yeah, please, I'll be right back. Well, it's going to be a group.
Come on in. Welcome.
Thank you.
I don't know, can you trust someone that stops for bacon during a race?
I thought I could smell bacon when I ran by it.
It was so wonderful, and I have to show you. So the picture on social media captures Sean and I walked in. But as soon as we realized that he was being filmed, then we started pretending like.
When the photographer was there, you strapped.
I would have switched legs. I ran the first leg.
Yeah, you you missed out.
I have you guys next year.
My daughter, my daughter smelled it, they're like, oh, yeah.
Somebody's cooking bacon.
You know, you know what's funny is Chris looked at it and he goes, that's thick cut bacon.
See the picture of them eating bacon? For having bacon cheeseburgers.
Bacon cheeseburger.
Seriousness, after that, really, the good majority of that, Sean and I talked about. How much we enjoy the people that we work. That we really do, we have a worked family and we love it.
Oh, that's good. That's great. Okay, speaking of that, we're now at our one forty five. Session, we're a little bit late, apologize, this is a discussion regarding the CJC and the ARPA funding request. Chris Crockett, you're listed here only, so.
It's gonna be.
Just to answer questions.
Share the screen, so I put this together this morning. And really, this is, we're gonna go through this portion very, very fast, what we're here to do is to. Uh, tell you where we're at with a current CJC building project and then to answer any questions that you have. Um, that's our primary goal is to just answer those questions, so this part we're gonna go through quite quickly. Let me see if I can move this over here. And what is, oh, there we go. So, in order to, we thought it would be helpful, especially with our new commissioner uh, coming on to just give a history of the CJC. The statutory authority, the organizational structure, and then how it's funded. So by statute, um, this was established in nineteen ninety one. Uh, the legislature and our very own Reed Richards, who is a part time attorney with our office. Uh, was uh instrumental in getting the statute passed. Um, but the legislature established the CJC program, it's a multi disciplinary in intergovernmental operation. Uh, to respond to child abuse victims and uh. Uh, to provide a safe place for victims to be interviewed. And then this, these facilities are known as the Children's Justice Center, and Rod, anytime you need to interrupt me, please, or any questions. Please do.
Yeah.
Um, the overall program is administered by the Attorney General's Office. Um, the Attorney General has been uh, directed to establish Children's Justice Center Satellite Offices or Multi Disciplinary Teams. And the listed counties are twenty two out of the twenty nine counties, and Weaver County is specifically listed as required to have a Children's Justice Center. Uh, in order to operate the CJCs. The Attorney General contract with various counties and other entities to provide those services, and that is done through statute. Um, the bulk of the services and the administration oversight of the CJC is actually delegated through contract. To Weaver County, that includes the budgeting, the cost, the personnel, and the management of services. And we have a current contract with the AG's office to do that. The CJC, it operates in a similar fashion to a county department. Um, the Weaver County Commission will approve the budget for the CJC. Uh, Rod, the director, reports to the Weaver County Attorney. And then Weaver County employees, uh, Weaver County employs all the CJC uh, employees. How the center is funded, the statute says it's uh, supposed to be a broad based funding, so that includes appropriations by the legislature. To the Attorney General, um, but it's also supposed to include grant money, local money, and then also private donations. Now, when the uh, CJCs were first established uh, in nineteen ninety one. There, if I'm correct, there were no appropriations given to construct or acquire buildings to operate the centers. And as such, this is where those nonprofits came from, and they were created to assist with raising the funds necessary to construct those buildings. All centers were originally owned by these individual nonprofits, if I remember correctly. So right now, currently, uh, thirteen of those centers are now owned by the counties where the buildings are located. So our current building is still owned by the Friends of the CJC. Uh, but as the commission is aware, we are working, going through the process to have that ownership transferred over to uh, be in the name of Weaver County. Um, as far as the budget, um, approximately comes through one third from the state, one third from the county, and then the other third from grant. Uh, funds, is that accurate?
Yeah. Is that correct?
So it was, it's gone up, the state has contributed a little bit more now this current year, so those ratios will change, but historically, that was about right.
Okay, okay. And that's just on operations?
Yes, operations, and the Friends Board has provided for the building maintenance and repair, so you almost throw the building cost out of that. So operations is about a third, a third, a third. Although the state now is kicking in more than they have.
Yeah, substantially, they give us good.
Especially because we are losing some federal money, so it's an offset.
Um, the current CJC, which is in, it's a beautiful uh, facility, uh, it's in a historic building. Uh, it has done, uh, it's been a great place and has served our community very well for many years. But unfortunately, it is just too small uh, to continue the necessary services and the case demand. And the lit cost and the logistics of renovating just is, it's unfeasible. Um, an opportunity in the search, I think, went on for several years to find a suitable location for a a new CJC. One that is centrally located uh, was quite a difficult task, but an opportunity to uh, enter into a long term lease agreement. With the Ogden School District has come about, and uh, they would, the Ogden School District would lease that to Weaver County. For a nominal amount, for example, we haven't finalized the terms of the agreement, but it'd be something like a dollar per year for a hundred years. Um, when we originally approached the commission about contributing ARPA funds to this project, the cost estimate of the CJC was around four million dollars. Um, the Friends of the CJC have agreed to sell the building and apply the proceeds uh, to the construction of the new building and the estimated sale. They some, sound around one point two five million, I mean, that's an estimate.
Yeah, that's a, that's an estimate, yeah.
And originally, it was, it was proposed that the Friends Board owned the new building, but as a. Um, requisite for receiving ARPA funds from the county and the municipalities. It switched from being owned by a nonprofit to being owned by uh, the county itself. Uh, and located on land owned by the school district. So already, the county has agreed to allocate one million of ARPA funding. Morgan County and the other municipalities and municipalities have agreed to provide approximately one point four million of ARPA funding. And state appropriations and donations of five hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and so that was going to cover that original. Uh, four million dollar estimate of what it would cost to construct the building.
There, there was, there was a few um, private donations that was coming in, besides that. But that's, that's pretty accurate.
Okay. New estimates have come in and been conducted by our Community Development Department. Estimate that the cost of the new facility be around seven million, that includes an eight percent contingency. And I've got to just tweak Scott Park a little bit here. I know he's probably looking at this and like, why are you putting all these numbers in sentence format? Wouldn't it just be easier to put it in a table? Is that what you're thinking?
Um, I won't say that loud.
Scott Park style right there.
I have it on a table right here.
So um, the estimated costs are uh, right now at seven million. And Scott, would you mind just telling us a little bit of how we got arrived at that number?
Well, Rodney gives a little bit of early history on getting some cost estimates. Cause I believe, Rod, you spoke with with some builders directly.
Yeah, yeah, when we first started, we we spoke some with some builders, I really sit down with Dave Wadman, he's a friend. And so I, I didn't know even how to start this process, so that's where I first sat down with him and I said, what, how does this work? And he says, you get an architect, he kind of outlined how a building is actually built, and then. I said, what do you think the cost is gonna be? And he said, you're looking at about, yeah, you're looking, I think it was a little higher than four, four.
Four to five million.
Yeah, four to five million, and that's where that first estimate came from, and so I was kind of shooting for that, and then it kind of exploded.
So, and then after that, uh. Uh, a meeting that was, I don't know, several months ago, Commissioner Harvey asked me to reach out to Boyer. Uh, to Nelson Homes and to Brad Bardo, smaller build, well. Boyer Nelson Homes, not small builders, but Brad Bardo, but relatively small, you know, look at the big construction companies, but. We ended up getting two bids, um. Boyer, Nelson Homes didn't produce anything for us, but we had two. Uh, ranging from six point four to seven. So the smaller builders gave us a little bit smaller cost estimate. In comparison to the other big ones.
Yeah, and we did reach out to uh, my, the architect Shane Saunders, reached out to Kier and to Waddan. And Kier was at seven million, Waddan was at seven point five million. Okay.
Okay. Um, and soon as we're finished this, we're gonna open it up to questions that the commission has. Because uh, I know you had some previous questions about the size uh, of the building and how they arrived at the. The particular design uh, of that building. Um, but the sources of funding, we broke those out. Uh, so a million of county ARPA funds, the Morgan County and the cities had uh, agreed to contribute one point three million. Um, again, estimated one point two million of the, from the sale of the existing building. State appropriation, particularly for this building, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Is that being solidified?
Kind of. So I talked to Tracy Tabbett, who's the program director from the state, and they got the, the state appropriated a million dollars of one time money. So I asked for two hundred and fifty thousand, and she told me two days ago, what was that?
Thursday.
I was with her on Thursday and I said, so, and she said, well, I can't tell you like officially, but you. It looks really good that you'll get two hundred and fifty thousand of that.
I thought Ken Ivory's bill, I thought he had twenty million, so where'd she come up with a million bucks?
So.
I'm just curious.
Some of that twenty is, is, is ongoing, this, this two hundred and fifty is one time.
No.
And.
Okay.
Is that what you want?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so this is one time money of one million dollars is shared, all the centers, and you can use it for anything that you really. Feel like using it for as long as it's kind of, and I'm gonna get some more, so next year, we get two million of one time money.
How much?
Two million, but that's gonna be, yeah, we're, I'm hoping, I'm not depending on any of that. Because it's a year away or more and.
Did she promise you that or what?
Uh, the two?
Yeah.
No. No. She didn't, she promised that we would get, I, I asked her for, how much did we say, one, two hundred thousand?
Yeah.
And then we changed it and said, Tracy, can you give us two hundred and fifty? And I might get a little bit more than that, it depends on what the other centers do, because the other centers may come back and say. The two million? That's next year.
Was it already appropriated?
Uh huh.
It was appropriated, but not to us.
It's, but not us.
If you're talking two million total.
Yes, two, two million one time again, but it's not, it's not free, yeah, so that's.
Okay.
That's really.
And we would compete for our share of that too.
Yes.
So we would get me, if we were lucky, another two hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
Yeah. I get it, okay, I thought you were talking two million potentially for here, but you're talking.
No.
Two hundred.
That's shared.
Possibly.
Twenty six, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we were lucky to get that, I mean, I've never seen any, we've never got two hundred and fifty thousand from the state, like in one time money like that, so.
Well, and the fact that there's a million to share among the whole state, which has twenty two centers, and they're earmarking a fourth of that to our one project. Tells you how important this, the State Attorney General's Office feels this building is. That they're giving us a quarter of their total funding allocation just for this.
Well, I came off of Ken Ivory's bill.
Yeah.
We actually hit it off, the reason that's here is because we talked to him.
Yeah, that's the group you're with, so, well, you did good, because that's really.
We need to get, first thing I'd say, we need to get two million for here, out of that next year.
Yeah, probably won't happen, but.
It's not gonna happen if you don't ask.
Right.
Well, true, so. But, yeah, I, yeah. Hopefully, we're well underway of having this building, like.
Well, there's gonna be, I mean, costs that hopefully the state would share if the building goes forward, with say, you know.
Right.
Furnishings, computers.
Okay.
We're trying to get the statute changed, because there's some restrictions on the statute.
Explain, explain to me why we got six hundred thousand for land acquisition, I thought it was a lease.
So that's the value that came back of the land, um, if we had to go find another location. Uh, we just wanted to put a value that, we didn't out, we're not gonna outright purchase uh, the land, but for the hundred years. Um, to uh, lease that parcel, the appraisal of that land, if we were to purchase it, came in at six hundred thousand.
We're not paying six hundred thousand, okay.
All right, that was.
Yeah, right.
Okay. I did look around on this, once before, so I, I, I spent a year. Driving Ogden City. And we, yeah, I was in a couple of meetings where we talked about it, and I couldn't find anything, and when I did, it was. A million plus, and I couldn't get it, nobody would sell it, so when we got this, that was just like amazing.
No, it's a good site, I agree, yeah.
And then the Friends of the CJC are currently paying for the architect uh, to do the design study. And so uh, that came in as estimated around about around a hundred and sixty thousand, they'll be paying for that. Um. So total costs, anticipated costs, the sources, uh, balance remaining roughly two point eight million. Um, and that's the reason why we're coming here today is to look at poss, the possibility of allocating additional ARPA funds towards that project. Some of the questions that I recall that you had Commissioner Faur with regards to the Friends of the CJC, and if you mind passing out the.
You get, you get these commissioner bowls. Yeah. You bet, absolutely.
Thank you.
This shows a more bro, uh, detailed organizational structure, so the Friends of the CJC. Uh, they are not in charge of any type of programming or direction of the CJC. Now, it gets a little murky in the fact that they own the building, they can determine what happens within the walls of that building. But um, the re, uh, since the county is looking to just own the building itself. The Friends of the CJC is just going to become a fu- funding mechanism and a supportive organization. They won't actually have any say or control over the programs that are offered, um, is that accurate?
It's, yeah, and that, that was one of the things that we was really, really concerned about. Because since the Friends own it, they control the program, and it should be Chris, it should be Chris already that controls the program. It's, because we're statutorily.
But I heard they weren't in agreement with that.
To which part?
About them li- giving up control over the program.
That's. Well, they. He's fixed that.
They've agreed to allocate the sale of the proceeds. Uh, towards the construction of the new building, and we would come up with a, an agreement, a lease agreement, where they could use a Porsche, a small portion of space. For their board meetings, and then we would come up with some additional contributions if they were going to pay for, you know, cleaning services or uh. Support of a, a, supportive of a program that they wanted to donate to. But since the county was taking on the obligations for ensuring the building, the overall maintenance of the building. Uh, we wanted it to be owned in Weaver County's name.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, much better.
Yeah, okay.
Um, and then there's an advisory board, uh, which I believe you sat on before, but again, I don't believe they have any actual control. Over how the program is run.
Nope, they're just advisory, uh, Commissioner Bowles is on it now, uh, Christian Harvey's been on it.
I've been on.
You've been on it, and uh, I don't think Scott Jenkins was ever on it, but you, but uh, yeah. But no, they're advisory, they're a great group.
They're a great group.
It, oh, great group, yeah, I got chief of Ogden City, you got Eric, and I got the sheriff, I got all, a couple of other chiefs, I got DCFS, I've got judges. So it's really, they come in and I explain what we're doing, and they'll say, we like this, we like this, why don't we do this different? I don't have to follow their advice, but most of the time I do, I mean, it's, they're our customers, so it really is a great board. It's, it, it, statutorily, they took it out in two thousand nineteen, the state legislature come in and abolished all the. It's, it, it, it statutorily, they took it out in two thousand nineteen, the state legislature come in and abolished all the advisory boards. Across the state, because there was, there was thousands of them.
Yeah.
And so the, so it's not required in state statute. It was prior to two thousand nineteen, but. Reed Richards, who's the chair, said, let's keep it. And I'm like, yeah, absolutely. Let's do, swing it quarterly. And that's a great board, but no, no power to change or force or. They actually get involved a little bit on, on hiring the director. If we were able to change that out, they would be involved a little bit in that as to that part of it.
So it comes down to the nonprofit that basically has the say so.
They have a lot of control, Gage. I, I didn't realize it and that's what the other centers were finding is all of a sudden they were saying, well, we don't like you to do that. So you can't do it. And, and I got county attorney going, this is what I want to see happening. My four little, little ladies who I love, they're great little ladies. They want to do table decorations though, and they're going, well, we don't like that.
Yeah.
And so we're not going to let you do it. And then the advisory board was coming back and saying, well, they're not going to tell us what to do. And I'm like, yeah, they are. They own it.
And hence, uh, the reason why now thirteen of the centers are now owned by the counties. And so we're steering and gently, and we have, I think, a good working relationship. They are in agreement with, uh, putting the proceeds towards a county owned, uh, facility. And I think we're going to have a good, uh, relationship within in the future. Uh, Shelley Jackson, who worked, used to work in our elections office, heads up the Friends.
I was aware of that.
And so she's been great to work with. The last thing I wanted to mention.
Okay.
And I'll ask Stephanie to help out with this and she has a copy of this and then we'll ha, see what questions we can answer for you. So to help bring, um. Move this process forward, we brought this under the county special projects committee. And Stephanie, would you like to explain where we're at?
So similar to the, to the, the jail project, uh, I asked Rod to come in and present to the committee. So we could actually put down into the spreadsheet and, and to a tracking mechanism and a management mechanism. Where this project has been and where it's going. So right, what you guys have here is a list of everything that's. Been going on and areas in, in progress. Um, and if you look really closely, you can see that a, a majority of the work's been done. By Weaver County. So we've contributed quite a, a bit to this project, uh, through Sean's department and through the surveyor's office. And then you can see where Rod has come in and where the friends board has come in. Um, and then where we're at. Kind of in this whole process right now, we've gone through, um. The, uh, you know, the bu, the cost estimates, the building site improvements and, uh, and then Scott. If you want to just talk really quickly where we're at with Ogden City, uh, I think that'd be really helpful for the commission to know where we're at in that process with Ogden City.
Okay, yeah, the county submitted two applications, um, like Rob mentioned. The contract with the architect is through the Friends Board. So, um. Their hired architect Shane Sanders has submitted a, an application for site plan approval. And we're probably more than halfway through that right now. Um, our office working with Rod, we've submitted a subdivision application, one lot subdivision for that project. Uh, from the thirty or so acres that the school board owns, um. CJC will occupy or is dedicating a one point nine acre lot. And we're more than halfway through that process too. We're getting very close.
Okay.
Yeah, so they're kind of getting close to that RP, that RP. So what was the reasons we wanted to put them into the special project so that we could stay on top of. The deadlines and on top of the funding mechanisms for this.
Good.
So this is a summary of that and, uh, if you have any questions, just let me know.
So with all, all of this, um, we want to just let you know where the status of the current project is. Identify what the balance remaining is, the funding gap based off of the most recent cost estimates that have come in. Um, and let you know that we are statutorily obligated or, and contractually obligated to have a CJC. It runs through the county essentially as a county department, um, and lay that framework and then talk to you, answer whatever questions you have. To determine whether or not fulfilling a port, all of it, all or a portion of that balance would be an appropriate use of ARPA funds in the commission's mind.
Okay. So let's talk about it, talk about a portion of that. What is the plans, uh, of the Friends? And then I'll be, you know. Quite upfront with you, when you first came to us a year and a half or two years ago, this was a project driven by the Friends of the Board. The Friends Group was going to be a nonprofit, said to be their building. You picked the site, you picked the architect. The county came in with the idea, okay, we'll contribute a million bucks if you go out. I think I made the motion and you go out and get the cities to contribute, which you did very successfully, by the way. Um, and it's kind of morphed into now a situation where the Friends have. Have decided either they don't want to fundraise or it's too big a project. But now we've kind of decided that we're going to be the owners of this house, but we haven't had any, when I say we, the county hasn't had any ability. To be through the design, the square footage, to see if this really, if this was a county building, we would have done this substantially different. We would have been on top of this right from day one. Well, now we're bringing, you're asking us to come in at the end of the project. And I'm going to quite, you know, put this bluntly, bail you out because the Friends haven't been able to go out and raise their. Two million bucks, whatever they promise is upfront. So quite frankly, I've got some heartburn with that. Um, it's not the way I like to see government run. And especially now where, and I've heard, you know, again, rumors. That the Friends Board doesn't want the county involved with any programming. They want to take control. There was a debate whether they even wanted to contribute. The funds from that, from the sale of the property. Um, that's still up for debate, whether the Friends would actually approve that. So. Uh, there, in my mind, there's a lot of unknowns, Rod, that I need to have cleared up before, you know, I look at any portion of that my personal. So. And I think it starts with understanding where the, you know, if the Friends are either going to be running this project or they're not.
They're not.
They won't be.
They're not.
But.
They're not.
But as of a week and a half ago, I had a different story told to me that they want to run it. They're not going to contribute the building. They want, they don't want the county involved with programming. So it's either their building or ours. And how do we go from here?
Well, the Friends, the Friends never, um, let me clarify a couple of things there that. So the Friends never really wanted to take over the programming. They don't really want to do that. But when you have, when, when they own the, the facility and then all of a sudden somebody comes in and said, would say, I always use the adult, the adult rape. Case that we had, because we had the county approaches, we were counted and said, we'd like to use your facility to interview adult rape victims. And I said, that's great. So I went to the Friends Board and said, this is what Weaver County would like to do, the county, the prosecutor's office. And the Friends Board says, then we got to carry insurance. And so we're not going to carry insurance. So it wasn't that the Friends were necessarily. Against, um, we're trying to regulate the, the programming of it. They were saying. Wait a minute, now you guys are throwing something in this op, opposite of our mission and we, we, we do kids, we don't do adults. And so, no, you can't use our building for that. And so they never really, s- so that's going to continue as long as they own it. And so we did come to the commission. It's been, we started this in two thousand nineteen.
Right.
And there was, there was several discussions at, at, at our advisory board, where the advisory board met and said. This needs to go to the county. So it wasn't me going like, okay, you know, that's, it, it was the advisory board was the main. Uh, conversations that happened saying, this needs to be a county building. Why is it even in the hands of the Friends? And if you really look at what we do, we're, we're treated much differently than other county agencies. I mean, I don't know of anybody else in the county that's statutorily required to do something. The prosecutor is not required to go out and get, do fundraising. So we've got this transition where we're, we're getting it back to where, to where it needs to be. And I just happen to be the director when this happened. You know, but it should, it could have happened ten years ago, fifteen years ago. But the intent in two thousand, i- i- in, in the beginning and when it was first started. The intent was for that Friends Board just to make sure we had a facility to run the program. And now that's, that was thirty five years ago. So now we're trying to correct this and make sure that this is a county agency. It falls under the county. It's the prosecutor. Has to use us, but we're required to go do bake sales to make it work. And so I guess my heartburn with it a little bit, and I've expressed this to the state, we should be, we shouldn't be in the nonprofit business at all. This is, I mean, the legislators have laid it out. They've laid, we got to have forensic interviewers. We've got to do mental health assessments. We got to have a medical facility. To do the medical exams. So go, go do a bake sale in the corner and figure out how you're going to pay for this. And I'm like, whoa, wait a minute here. Legislators, if you're going to require this. Then, you know, this needs to be a, we'll follow that and we'll get a contract, but the county needs to be completely in charge of this. The Friends Board can come in and do a couple of things. The, the Friends Board, that role has just gotten out of hand. And now it needs to go back to where it needs to go. And the county needs to own this. The county needs to own it. It needs to rent it. It needs to be through Chris Arred. A, a, and our cases are skyrocketing. And so it's just, so that's what's kind of happened on this. And I'm just a guy in the middle of it.
And the Friends Board has agreed to do this. I mean, this is going to solve that problem where it's just going to, the Friends Board will just be a funding source. Uh, to support the CJC. And I think there's a couple of things that happened throughout this process where it did morph. Because there was a point where the, the scope and, uh, of the project turned.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a couple of factors. One is that for, first initial four million dollar cost. That is, and that came out in twenty twenty one, when we first approached the county. For ARPA funds. And so that was the, the goal. And then another factor that came into this is that in order for the cities to participate and allocate their ARPA funds, they wanted to have. The county own the building and not have their ARPA funds go to the Friends Board. And so that's where that shift happened. But we were already halfway down the process of the design of a building. And so at that point, we took it in-house. And since then, we've been having it come under the special projects committee. We've been working with the community development department to coordinate with Ogden City. We've been negotiating with the Friends Board with regards to lease agreements. Uh, our office has been communicating with the, um, uh, the school district. So it wasn't origin, it didn't originate with the county, but it came under the county. And now it's under the county's control and supervision. So that pro, uh, that issue that you identified, I believe, will be solved. But then there was a factor. That I think everyone is experiencing who is requesting ARPA funds is this new cost estimate. So at the direction of Commissioner Harvey. Uh, the county went out and started getting preliminary estimates of what this would cost. And it seems like it's coming in around seven million. So it's got inflation factored into that. Um, and just the overall rise in construction costs. Um. Now, as far as if, uh, do you, you had questions previously about the size of the building to make sure it was appropriately sized.
Correct.
As far as I understand, it, many CJCs build it like a house. It looks like a nice old house with gables and everything. But to build a fifteen thousand square foot house like that is very expensive. And so the design was shifted to more of a. Friendly but modern.
It's in your package.
Yeah.
I think at the end, it showed what the original homes were going to, like even before that gauge, there's a couple there. That was kind of, that's.
The very last page is the actual current design.
Keep going, keep very good.
Keep going.
Right.
Yeah.
So that's kind of what we started at. When I started looking at this, I'm going, whoa, would you know what that's going to cost? To put gables and wraparound portions and, and need to maintain something like that? I said, we're going to go a different direction. So literally, that's Saint George's.
George, I've seen that.
Yeah. And so when I sit down with Shane, Shane Sanders and I went down and spent some time at Davis Counties. And, and Davis Counties is well laid out. And then we literally just took what the statutory requirements are. So when it started saying, you have to have a multidisciplinary team and you have to meet once a week and evaluate cases. My, my team is, is forty five people. So I had to build a, a room, a training room, we call it the training room, but that really is a room on the.
So it's similar to what you're thinking about or.
Mm-hmm.
That's what it looks like. Now you, and you got some floor plans right there. So if you look, there's like, there's a training room.
Yeah.
That's, that's just about the size I need to meet the statute on how many people have to come to the center once a week. Then I, we looked at it and said, how much room do we need for medical? How much room, how many interview rooms do we need to, to match the number of cases we do? And that's what we ended up with, the three and three. We have to have separate meeting rooms for the families. We have to have separate meeting rooms for the. For the, um, the interviewers to meet with the family. I mean, everything that we have is pretty much required by. What we're asked to do. I did build in a little bit of extra space, but. I mean, not much. We have a full basement. The basement will not be finished. It'll have some infrastructure down there, some, some of my mechanical stuff. But other than that, that's basement's going to be for future use. And i- if we need to add. I can see mental health therapy come in our direction like wildfire. E- eventually they're going to come and say. CJCs, you need to have in-house therapists. Where am I going to put them? So when we, when we found the land, we have an extra half an acre and then we have the basement. So. The whole design was, I thought Shane did a great job on it. It's very, it, the flow works, the pa, the parking was required by Ogden City. They made us do sixty stalls. And I'm like, I don't have sixty cars. And they would not back off on that.
What is it that you?
So what we, what do we do, Scott? We got it reduced a little bit, like to fifty three or something.
Favor of the county and got it down a little bit more. I, I think what's shown there doesn't quite meet the code as, as somebody could read it. But again, they, they interpreted in a way that helped us. So they got it down to like fifty three or something like that.
That's interesting, since they've gone to a zero parking requirement.
Yeah.
So. I don't, I don't understand that, but.
Well, that is.
There's a whole bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
So this building, I don't think if the county was to start today, it would be much different than that. I really, I don't.
And I'm not disputing that fact at all.
It's going to be about the same size. It's going to be, um, the flow is going to be about the same. And again, that's just. And as, as we look at our cases going up, it, and the growth that we see in the county, our cases are going to go up a hundred cases a year. And so we're, we built that in a little bit, but I, I foresee this lasting twenty five years. Twenty years before you'd really have to add more, hopefully, unless it gets way out of control. So there was a lot that went into this building to make it a, a little cheaper, but make it nice and make it. Private, make it away from everybody. That's why we love this piece of land. And so. I don't know. I don't know if it would have been much different.
And one of the questions we had when we met last week to discuss as a group to prepare for this presentation is if ARPA funding wasn't available. And we have these contracts, like would the county contribute and then dip into its general fund to construct this building? Um, so if ARPA funding went away, we would still have the obligation to go ahead and put together. Yeah, it's still there. We still have to provide the service. It might change the dynamic with how much the state contributes. Um, but the service still needs to be provided. And so, and with this one, I mean, uh, the ARPA funds that come from the county. And, uh, the cities, I mean, those aren't coming out of our general fund. We do have the nonprofit being willing to contribute the. Proceeds from the sale. We do have state appropriation.
Have they agreed to that?
Okay. Yeah, that's in place. That's, Chris has done a great job with them and you sit down and they finally said, we'll give you the money. And there's even some depreciation built into it a little bit.
Logistics that we would have to go through and you understand better than, wh- what was the bait like when we last met them, the understanding of how the sale would work?
So we basically worked on it and said, look, you're not going to be able to give us the proceeds for a year after the building's completed. We need the money upfront. So the county, we're, we're actually going to ask the county to front the one point two five million in terms of cash. And then what they're going to do is they're going to sell the, the building and then the proceeds of that building would then go into offset with the county contributes. To the CJC on an ongoing basis. So it'll offset our ongoing funding for four or five years until we ate all that up. Um, and so we would have the cash in hand, we would put it in the bank, we would show it as restricted and every year we'd use three hundred thousand dollars or whatever the county normally appropriates to the CJC. We would just use that first. Um, and that's how we would kind of cash flow this. But the, the. Guarantee would basically be that the CJC Friends Board would have a space in there. So they're like essentially prepaying for a lease for. However, long we have that building, they get to use that space. And then after so many years, that, that interest goes down to nothing. So I can't remember if we decided ten years or something like that. It's like in ten years. So if, if we went around and sold the building in five years. They would have five years worth of lease payments left on a space wherever we went and built a new building. And in ten years, that obligation would go away. Now, we don't anticipate selling the building in ten years. And so we don't anticipate it being an issue at all. But they were really worried that we would, I don't know why, build this nice big building and then turn around and sell it and run away with the money.
We can't because we're restricted through the development agreement.
I don't think they'd lose any sleep over that.
Yeah, it's like, we can't, we can't, we can't do anything with a building.
Yeah, the, the development agreement specifically states that we are receiving the rezone to operate a CJC. Yeah, the, the development agreement specifically states that we are receiving the rezone to operate a C J C, nothing else. So the Friends Board, at least the two people that we met with, they seem very amiable or uh, in favor of that approach.
Yeah, so run that by me against, we're going to upfront the. One point two five.
We'd upfront one point two five, either out of the County General Fund or out of the ARPA dollars, depending on which we wanted to use. And then, but what happened is.
And with that upfronting, are we going to take title to the building or how are we doing?
Yeah, we own the building. It's our building.
Okay.
And then.
So we're gonna, we're gonna take the purchase out of your hands. We're gonna buy it.
Well, we'll construct it. Yeah. So we would construct and pay the building. We would manage that as a county project, probably under government.
No, I'm, I'm talking about their existing building.
Oh no, they're going to sell the existing building.
So the one point two five. Doesn't have anything to do with their existing. So how do we make sure, how do we ensure that when that building gets sold? That that money comes to us? Or goes into that project?
We'd enter into some type of contract with them.
Cause that, that needs to be a contract. It needs to be recorded. Nothing's stopping them from selling the building. And then saying, okay, we're going to have five hundred thousand go to our favorite charity over here. Uh, and I don't want to be faced with that.
Well, we would have that, in that lease agreement where they get the office space, that would be the same agreement where we say you have to give us entire proceeds of the sale.
Yeah, and we'd probably have to sit down and think about what other documents would be necessary to tie that up, just to make sure that there's no way to. Get out or you know, provide something less.
That's what I'm worried about. There's, there's a lot of uh.
There will be.
Slippery slopes when it comes to real estate transactions.
So before that transaction would go through, we would identify the mechanism that would make sure that we receive those proceeds.
Well, the mechanisms do would be to number one, take title to it. Number two, record a notice of interest against the title. So there's a couple of different ways to do it.
Well, I think they agreed in principle that they would be willing to enter into an arrangement for the sale proceed to go into the building. Now I, you would know the mechanism better than I.
And then what happens if the building sells for eight hundred thousand?
Well, so that's, that is the thing with the county taking upfront of the cash.
I've sold the building twice in previous life, so.
We take the risk.
I know the building.
If it sells for eight hundred thousand or half a million, then we. We eat. Or if it sells for one point seven, then we would get that. But yeah. We're, we're accepting the risk.
Yeah.
So I have, I have a question. Well, my.
Sure.
And I, just so you know, I think this is our responsibility. I, so maybe I disagree with you, Gage. It's, it's, it's required by statute. And so, I think, I think you're right, Rod. You're. You're caught in the middle of this transition, which it seems like other counties have gone to, and I think other counties will go to.
Yes.
Because it just makes sense.
All across the state.
Right. It's going that direction. We're just at that crossroads. Now we have to deal with it. So I'm supportive of that. But like, we had a question in our last meeting. With the representative from, from Friends Board. About um, additional capital fundraising. Has there been any more conversation about that? And did they plan to? To raise capital? We've toward a project?
They've told me that they would not do a capital campaign. And so. I. I'm trying not to do a capital campaign. I mean, that, that's where, that's what I say, that's where I come back to. Why, why are we going to have to do a capital campaign?
I'm not looking for a certain answer. I just.
Yeah.
Wondered where.
They told me in two thousand nineteen, so I approached them first in two thousand nineteen and they flat out told me they would not. That's when I found out I actually had a problem with my Friends Board. That's, then I started to see little indicators like, whoa. What's going on here? And so. We're going to try to repair that. Some of that, I think, it got to the point where I didn't have many conversations with them. Chris did it and Scott did. And I kind of backed out of it because I could tell there was really some strong feelings there and that we were at a stalemate and I'm like, this is your guys' responsibility. And so it's, yeah. I guess I'm just back to the original, like this, this, there shouldn't be really, this is a county. Building. It's going to be a county program. It's going to be run by the county attorney. It needs to be the same as all of their county programs. Or county departments, in my opinion. But it would be, it would be way nice once this is done. Then we're, we're back where we need to be and you're going to have a state of the art center. Really, if we can get ARPA funding. This fell into place really, really well. If you look at what some other counties have experienced trying to get something built like this. Where we have a building, there's ARPA money available. This could turn out to be really. A, a perfect thing for Weaver County. Uh, the way I look at it anyway.
Well, yeah, I mean, I asked the question and I, I don't know. I mean, Rod was very nice and gracious when I asked the question, but like, why do we have to build a new building? What if in five years we just decide to renovate? The basement of the Weaver Center or the first floor, pick your floor. Um, so there, besides just the, I mean, the care issues, you know, just going to the finances. If we lose the ARPA funding and we have to give those contributions back to the cities, even if it costs us half. Of what it costs us to build it now, that's money that the County General Fund has to cop up. Right now, if we use the ARPA funds and these contributions, the County General Fund is at zero dollars. There's no property tax or sales tax used to furnish this. So. Question of timing, if we can do that, and I'm not saying that, that doesn't mean we don't need to raise additional capital funds. I'm just saying if we wait. Five years and we fund a building that's a half or a quarter of the cost, that's still that money that has to come out of our pocket.
Right.
Whereas now it doesn't have to come out of our pocket. So looking at a different building, whether it was inside Weaver Center or some vacant office space. In Ogden, the, the timing of this becomes critical. So right now we have all the money available and we lose that when the ARPA goes away.
Time is critical. And, and I don't disagree. That it's our responsibility. So I do. It's our responsibility because.
We are dealing with it right now.
Because it's, well, it's tossed on us by statute.
And hon- honestly, the sooner the better for me that we get it out of the hands of the Friends Board and, and then they can become the kind of partner that they're intended to be, right? They'll have lease space in the building. They'll, they'll be assisting the program in the. It, it repairs that relationship, I think.
They can do some direct victim services instead of buying drain gutters and sidewalks and sh- and shingles. Yeah, and arbers and they will do it being direct victim services and. I, I went to one, one, well, it was the Weaver, Weaver Center or Weaver, uh, Mental Health Foundation. And I went to them and I said, hey, about giving me a little money for some bricks and mortar? And they're like, no, but we'll give you nine thousand dollars for clothes and shoes and. It to, to create a little place there. Cause sometimes we have to take kids' clothes if, if there's evidence. And so that's what I would like to see the Friends Board get involved with. Stuff like direct victim services on stuff the state and the county will. Can't or won't, can't pay for. Instead of the stuff they're doing now, it's backwards. And they could do some great stuff. And so that's, we are in a transition, but once this is over. You are going to be in great shape with, with the best center in the state. Salt Lake hasn't even got anything like this, not even close. So it would be, it would be awesome.
Also might be, we might be in a good position if the commission decides to move forward. To leverage and just say, look, the stars have aligned. And to utilize or put some pressures, uh, talk to the state about that two million dollar appropriation. Look, this is, this is going to happen, but we're going to need some help with furnishing and all of that. And so we can get some more cooperation from them.
Cause Tracy in the AG's office was the one who brought up, you know, there, there will, at least unofficially, there, there should be more money next year. And if you still have needs. We would definitely want to be supportive next year. She just can't commit dollars and cents yet on next budget here.
And if we could go and say, look, Weaver County has taken it this far, could you please help us with?
Kick in some furniture. But for the legislative session, because that statute needs to change.
It does.
Can't, right? You can't mandate bricks and mortar and then not provide resources for it and expect the counties to come in and take up the slack. So I think we, we'd have success putting a little pressure on her again next year.
Well, the pressure needs to go back to. The legislators tells Tracy what she can spend, not vice versa.
Exactly.
So it starts with appropriation bill. So we need to start there. So I guess what I would want to make sure is you guys are willing to go down there and spend some time and tell your story. Because we need more money from the state.
We are, I thought, Stephanie, didn't you think that we were, we're, we're pretty well liked by them guys down there? I don't, I think we're one of their centers that they really. Cause we stayed true to the, true to our mission, where other centers are starting to go in different directions that the statute doesn't require. And so. Weaver has always been, we've tried to keep true to our mission and so they like us and Tracy's like, I'd love to give you guys money. Because you're, you're, you're doing what you were asked to do in the beginning.
The, the time to start on that's now during interim. Not wait till January. So we need to, so.
Yeah.
Make sure you work with Stephanie. She can get us on the committee agendas and now's the time to start. So again, and I don't have any. Question. That we're head the right direction. The part that's frustrating to me is that that's not the direction that we were initially sold the building goods in this room. Where we were told the Friends was going to go out and do a capital campaign. Look, county would love you to come in with a million bucks, which we did. So, and, and again. This is not necessarily your fault, but if we would have taken on this, if we would have known this, if I would have known this from the start. We probably would have gone a little different direction in terms of what this thing.
Yeah, I think.
Or we would have gone down to the state. We got, we would have gone down to talk to Ken Ivory last January and said, look, here's where we're at. Friends Board's bailing out on us. We need two million bucks. So anyway, it is what it is.
Yeah. Uh, what would you like to? Uh, have us do going forward? I know we put a pause on the architect. Do we need to wait for Commissioner Harvey to return so you can talk with him?
Where are we with the architect?
He's, he's going forward. In fact, he called me and said, I'm ready to sit down with you and look at colors and paint and interior, but I. But that's. So the architect right now is being paid by the Friends Board.
That's a hundred and sixty, am I?
Yes, and they're, they're paying that. So it's not the county.
I'm okay to move forward.
All right. No, I, Jim will be.
Yeah, I don't, I'd hate to slow that down.
He told me whatever we want to do here.
Yeah.
Commissioners, we're going to include this as part of our ARPA discussion.
So what we need to do is. If that's your applicant, we have the application?
I submitted an application at the beginning.
You need to amend your application then.
Yeah, and this is one of the county managed projects. So we are following the, our policy that we set up for that. So yes, it's, it's.
So if this is now a county managed project. Which I'm assuming you're saying it is.
Yes.
So is this a county managed project or is this a Friends project?
No, it's nothing to do with the Friends. It's me and Scott.
I mean, we can't have it both ways.
No, the Friends is out.
You can't have, you can't have two bosses.
So you guys as commissioners are in charge and then under your direction, Sean and his groups.
And if you explain that to the Friends Board, because I don't want to get calls from the Friends Board saying, you damn commissioners.
That's already happened.
Okay.
I, I feel confident the Friends Board is out. They're happy. They're content. They, they're ready to just have an office in there and go.
Okay.
Help with.
Work for that then.
And we're going to keep you in the tracking system.
Yeah.
So get your amended. Project application in.
So because we've shifted them over to be a county project, we don't have the exact same process, but yes, we're, we're working on that and they've got.
And you'll have basically the same numbers and.
Yeah, we have, I think, everything we need from the C J C to present to that too, when we present all the ARPA projects.
Okay, we're going to do that in two weeks.
Pin in this and then we'll look at all of the projects together.
Yeah, so this would be just one of, well, you also have Powder Mountain Water Improvement and you have this um, C J C and you have the Housing Authority and you have. L M S A and you have Wolf Creek. Yeah, I mean, you have all these additional, yeah, plus all the Bonavistas or whatever that have asked for additional funding. So we're going to bring that all back to you.
That'll be fun. Okay, yeah. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the update. Right? I know you've done whatever you can on this. Uh, and, and having two different uh, bosses is not always. A fun thing to have.
No, it's, I received a few threats. I'm sure.
And that really is going to be fixed.
About interim and, and put a strategy together. I'll get that back to Gage. So.
But let's. Yeah, I would say sooner than later because interim's going to get real serious here in about thirty days. The time to have any legitimate discussion is during interim. You wait to Jan- or January, we're too late.
No, it's, it's definitely, like, third, last Thursday I talked to her and I, and we talked about the, the next appropriation of that one-time money already. It just wasn't very.
Well, and Tracy was in favor of us going and getting the statute changed, but their office has to stay neutral on it. But she was.
That's okay.
But if we want to, if Weaver County wants to leave the charge on that, we're happy to do that.
We can make a statute change very easy.
Yep.
We've got enough time before we commit all of our other ARPA funds to bring in the legislators and just say, look, we need some help making this project succeed.
Exactly.
Right.
Well, and we've talked about committing those ARPA dollars twice, just in case one of the projects falls through. So this could be like, okay, we're last in dollar wise.
Yeah.
Exactly.
So, but if we can get two million from the state and that's two million state goes first and then.
That's, that's exactly what I'm saying is that we're, we're not. I don't think we're going to leave you hanging out to dry.
But that two million.
That's, that's my vote.
So we understand that two million is.
No, we're, we're being ambitious.
That's a twenty-six center.
You're gonna, you're gonna be able to sell it two million dollars.
Provo and Salt Lake and the cash.
So be it.
I think we can get our legislators in the room and show them this project is too good to, it just cannot fail. So I think we're going to get a lot of support.
I think so too.
And that may, that may necessitate a court change. It may necessitate just an appropriation bill. Either way, we'll work through the details.
But then the county's willing to backstop it to make sure we go through what the state pays first.
You'll have a back, you'll have a backstop. But if we want, if we can, if we're successful, we'll use the state money first and then we'll fill in some holes with whatever we need to fill in. That makes sense.
And it sets precedence for all the other ones on the state level to make these changes as needed. But they'll have a mechanism to do it that doesn't fall under the county, falls on the state, which it should in the first place.
Which it should, yeah.
So it's, it's a good fight. It's a good fight to have and it's, and I think.
Oh, it definitely is. And it's, it's, it's time to have that. So it's, it's. You know.
And if thirteen, did you say thirteen of the sixteen out there are now county controlled?
Thirteen of the twenty-two.
Of the twenty-two.
Saint George is half. So Saint George is building another big part to there. So half of theirs is friends and, and this county owns the other half of their building now. So everybody's trying to get away from their Friends Boards, but it's not that easy. Some Friends Boards have just been really easy and said, we're out, it's yours. But then others have been, you know, a little more difficult.
And ours, at least, I mean, I, I know in twenty nineteen it was difficult, but. The one right now, it seems like they're totally supportive of this idea.
Yeah, they're, they've come around. There was, we had one particular board member that was kind of like driving everybody else and that board member's not involved, but. There was a lot of influence from her and so. I think they followed and now they're like, okay, now we're starting to see that that probably wasn't the best path to go. And so it's much more. It's a lot of friends. Yeah. You can have one that kind of leads everybody along. And I think we're past that.
But I think once we're out from under the landlord tenant complication, you know, our relationship with the Friends Board will be so much more beneficial for both sides.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I understand their attachment to it. That's been their baby for a while.
Thirty-five years.
Yeah. Been that long?
Thirty-five.
That location?
Now, this is their third. So they bought the first, the second and the third buildings.
Yeah.
And now it's, so there is that institutional.
Yeah.
Thing and now it's like, well, it's time to change and.
Yeah, okay. Thanks, Chris. Appreciate it. Thanks, Doug. Take care.
You underwater? Are you okay?
It's starting to go down.
It has gone down.
South Park's dropping it, yeah.
I drove up there the other day. I'm like, it's got to be close.
I had two, I had two to three feet in my backyard, but.
But it never got you, huh?
Never got me, but I had a little bit in my crawl space, but not like, you know Craig Rocock.
Yeah, we, yeah.
Oh, he had. He had made it one. And he had, he had guns down there. He had all of us. He was a place, never should have had a base.
Right there.
Right there. You know, that hill's been underwater. I'm trying to think what I could think for the last thirty to twenty years. That was a face.
I know.
Well, anyway.
Well, I'm glad you're not, because I was talking about this the other day and I'm like, he's got to be.
No, we, I've never, I haven't seen the river that high. Uh, you know, it's within like a thirty. Which lately, it went over to Berthis Lane, into my backyard. It was probably a hundred foot.
That's crazy.
My wife couldn't sleep.
Why? I probably would have been sitting out there too. I don't know what you can do. It's hard to stop water.
It's hard. No, you don't stop it very fast.
Good, I'm glad you're all right.
Thanks, Rod. So are you okay with? Hi there.
So.
Yeah.
No way. Yes. That's a June state.
Yeah, it'll be, but I do wanna be.
I don't see Todd, now I see him.
We have water and both of them are, I almost skipped in my truck.
Really?
We dug in the snow, metal detectors.
You found it?
We found it.
Hop in.
Well, I was up at Memorial over the weekend, Black to Friday, it was looking pretty good.
It's not bad. We lost some ground, so I'm watching, and a bridge, but we're okay, we're open. We're doing.
Open?
Two minutes, we're open.
Wow, cool. Okay, sorry folks for getting a late start. Uh, let's go to our, uh, two-thirty. Discussion regarding methane harvesting pilot project. Stephanie Russell, Sean Wilkinson, Todd's with us, Brandon and Jason Horn. There's Jason right there. Uh, Stephanie, you wanna take the lead on that?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, go ahead.
It's a really fun proposal. Um, I do wanna go around the table very quickly and do some brief introductions, so that we all know who everybody is. And then we'll, um, get started and it shouldn't take very long. Um, Stephanie Russell, Economic Development Director for Weber County.
Isaac Giraway, Chief Technology for Keenerdy, Apple Street Facility.
Troy McKinley, President, Barricarbon, Carbon Credit Tracking.
Yeah.
I'm Ferrario, President, Reverend.
Brandon Quinney, Weber County Attorney's Office.
Jason Horn, Weber County Procurement.
Jennifer Graham, Weber County Culture Parks and Rec.
Sean Wilkinson, Weber County Community Development.
Marty Smith, Weber County Culture Parks and Rec.
Uh, Aaron Jordan with Keenerdy, uh, the BioGas and Air Support.
Uh, Kim and Payne, Keenerdy, Vice President of Business Development.
Sharon Mullis, Weber County Commission.
Kay Shore, Weber County Commission.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you for being here.
We are gathered here today to talk a little bit about renewable energy. Um, as you know, we've kinda taken an interest in this in Weber County. Uh, we have Keenerdy here with us today. They are a Weber County business specializing in methane harvesting and biogas. Um, harvesting with a very, very unique and innovative technology. Um, so today's discussion is a proposal, uh, uh, regarding our closed landfill at, in our, in our, in our park area. And we have met as an internal team to talk about how we can do a pilot program with Keenerdy to harvest methane. Um, and do some, do some beta testing. They would like to do some beta testing. This would be at no cost to the county, but had a minimal cost, okay, there's a minimal cost. Todd will get into that. Uh, for very minimal cost for the county, but it would put the county in a position to, uh, really lead the charge in northern Utah. Uh, for this type of, um, renewable energy and, and Kevin and his team will explain that in just a little bit. In addition to this landfill project, we're also looking at several other locations in the county, if this is a successful endeavor. Um, as well as tracking and promoting this on the state level and I'll tell, talk a little bit about that. So I'm gonna turn it over to Kevin's team and he can explain the details of what they'd be asking from the county and then Todd, you can pop into with a little more detail on what that would look like on the site.
Sure, I'll, I'll start with the business developments and part of our global view and then I'll turn it over with Isaac or CTO to talk about the technical aspects of, of this, but, uh. Um, I think we all know that methane is rapidly becoming the foremost issue around the globe in terms of climate change. And so being a, a company that actually has a technology, as Stephanie mentioned. Uh, actually assures a hundred percent methane destruction, actually gen, and actually generates electricity and heat. Uh, we think this is actually a, a very useful solution. Um, if you look at what the United Nations and other organizations, uh, uh, are saying about this, basically, um, you don't get to the climate change goals that we've set for ourselves and the planet. Uh, if we don't actually take care of all of the sources of methane and unfortunately or unfortunately, many of those methane resources are owned by small farmers, small landfills, small wastewater, small towns, small businesses. Um, and so we think that our technology is perfectly suited for that. And so we're very excited by the vision that we are currently has and, and discussions with Stephanie and Sean and others. Of becoming, um, uh, participating and maybe even help leading, uh, renewable energy technology, uh, development, uh, and an ecosystem built here in Weber County. So we're very excited to be here today and I wanna thank you for your time and attention and energy. And we're looking forward to, uh, doing more of these things. And as Stephanie mentioned, uh, there's wastewater facilities, there's landfills, there's farms, there's small businesses. And all of these are, are good targets for us to actually do pilots. And, uh, and the goal is to create jobs, create renewable energy. Uh, rate of, of resiliency and of course for Keenerdy, uh, success in our own backyard, as I like to say.
And currently, uh, Keenerdy does not have any of these types of beta testing in the state of Oregon, so this would be a really great. Sorry. Instead of Utah.
I understood.
And to have, and for them to be a, a Weber County business and for us to be doing the beta testing in Weber County, um, is just, it, the stars aligned and we're just really excited about this. Isaac, you wanna talk a little?
Mainly, mainly the question is usually is, what do you guys do and what is it, what is it really actually? And that's why we've gone to the, to the landfill and actually looked at the sizing. Most people are quite confused about what it actually is. So, in terms of size, if you're interested, I can present to the screens or just, I can describe with my hand, but it's roughly the size of a fridge. And it converts methane into electricity. Um, we started primarily working the natural gas industry. Um, if you look at the emission levels in the United States, the largest low-hanging fruit or emissions in the United States is coming directly from ground methane from the natural gas industry. Um, of the natural gas industry, some huge portion of it, so we're talking like twenty-five or thirty percent. We are the only company in the world right now that are addressing that twenty-five or thirty percent. Um, we have thousands of these units spread out across the United States, primarily, um, West Virginia, Ohio, Pennsylvania, um, Louisiana, Texas. Um, all the way out through the Rocky Mountains to California. Here, here, I guess the closest one is Monte Cristo. So all natural gas pipelines that crisscross the United States all are pretty much powered by our technology. So we've been in the business for about ten years, um, providing these natural gas generators. When I say generators, we use raw methane directly from the ground to create electricity for the natural gas operators to, to do things with. And recently, we've been approached by a number of state and local governments who are saying, we have an issue with methane being emitted from our landfills. For those of you who know, a landfill sticks around for a very, very long time, gets closed and life, and it continues to emit. Um, and it emits for decades. And those emissions are becoming. A focus point at the state government, but also at the federal government level. And so we've had, for example, the state of Maryland, um, asked us to be in a project with them, which began earlier this year. We placed some of our generators on closed landfills. The idea is that these are landfills that weren't designed initially to have, um, natural gas generating capacity. When I say natural gas, converting natural gas into electricity. When a new landfill, for example, if you go to Davis Landfill. Um, the large one near the Air Force Base has a huge natural gas conversion plant, you know, megawatts and they produce power for Hill Air Force Base as well as for other ancillary, um. Um, accommodations within the county. Um, the landfill that you have at the Park and Rec Center, it's been closed for years. There was none of those accommodations put into place in terms of the well, the networks, everything in place. And so now what's going on with the methane is just being emitted to the environment. And so our technology will come into these closed landfills, these old landfills, these landfills that are frankly a liability from an environmental perspective, and we can convert that raw methane into electricity. And so we've been doing that successfully now for roughly about a year, year and a half, using our same technology that we've been using in the natural gas industry. Um, we fly people to Mexico, we fly people to Maryland. And we've been reaching out to Stephanie and she's been awesome to work with, thank you, of saying, would it be possible to actually put some of these generators right here in Onkin? Um, because it's getting expensive to fly engineers to Maryland, when the same problem exists all over the state. Um, we would provide the generators at complimentary, we would retain ownership, we would do all the servicing on them, we would maintain them, we'd make sure. You can benefit from the revenue streams such as electricity or more than part of credit generation. Um, those revenue streams would be for the county to, to enjoy as long as the generators are running. At any point in time, you can decide we're done, we'll pick up the generators and we'll take them home. As I said, they, about the size of a refrigerator, they fit on the back of a pickup truck, very easy to install, very easy to carry away. Um, so that's kind of the backbone of the, of the, what we're trying to discuss now to see if we wanna move forward. I think long-term. We would like to see every single closed landfill in the state have one of our generators. But let's not get ahead of ourselves. So, we did go to the, maybe it's good for Utah to jump in, talk about it this.
So my initial concern was, I know where the pipes are, I know where the old methane plant was.
Right.
Um, just to give a brief history, there was about thirty years where that was making power with a quite large methane plant. It got to the point that not only was the plant outdated and dilapidated, but we were no longer required due to the readings in the time span to keep that operational. So, that's where our secondary parking lot is, which is very heavily used. Um, my concern was this thing sitting in the middle of parking lot where I turn buses around and that was my vision that first comes, you know, protect yourself first. It, it, it's non-intrusive. We went out and looked. Um, the cost to us would probably be in the five hundred dollar range to get a pad to expose that line. And to put a little chain link fence around it, hopefully with some advertising on it that says, a great partnership. Testing with Keenerdy and Weber County looking towards sustainability in the future. Um, the thing that hasn't been mentioned about this technology is it, it can turn power with a very low percentage of methane. You know, I think you told me about the other ones who need about forty percent or above methane to churn out power. They can go much, much lower than that. So when you're talking about aged-out landfills or smaller quantities, their technology can still produce energy. So the thought was, i- it's a small outlay for us. Put it in, do about a three-month test to see what we're getting. What does that look at with carbon credits? What does it look like going back to the archery range as far as power? At that point, we would decide, do we run a line from the generator to the power box, about sixty, sixty-five feet, not a big cost. But we have to put a little meter in there that obviously slows our meter down and shows power going back. I think we test first and say, what does it look like? Opens valves up, see what they're getting, see what their generator does. At that point, if we say, hey, we can spend fifteen hundred bucks and run these lines, 'cause we're gonna generate X amount of power throughout the next couple of decades, whatever this looks like. I think it's kind of a win for us. I think it's a good foot forward for the county to show that we're interested. I think it's good for a local company to be able to come over and say, this is as small as we get, but look what it's doing. So. Yeah, thank you. Not a lot of skin off our back if you guys decide this sometime you wanna do.
Okay. Do we know how much methane we've actually got? Because we had the plant there for years.
Yeah, so they've, they've done some readings and I can probably speak to that better than I can. So, we, we've drawn up on multiple times, it was through winters, we had to dig through the snow to get to the wellheads, we've done measurements. Um, you're running now roughly between, I would say, thirty-five and forty-two percent methane, is that? That, or you're getting some readings.
My rate is about, average about forty-five percent.
Forty-five percent, so, which is, which is right on the cusp of being too low. Or any other generating technology. You, you would, you would find it challenging to attract a large biogas generating partner with forty-five percent.
Right, well, I think, I think the part that's missed is it hasn't been used in, what do you think, we're down eighteen months?
Yeah, at least.
Two years?
Two years.
So you have buildup in there. So although that's a good reading, you're not gonna get that twenty-four seven, right? I mean, we're, we're kinda packed with methane, so I think continuous use, that never would go down to the point it's not feasible for a bigger style generator.
Yeah. Which was our issue and, or a reason why we.
Cause it kept on shutting off.
Exactly, exactly. So we have done readings. Um, in terms of the size of the landfill, you probably have more methane than a single generator can, can, can cope with. Um, I think it's for demonstration purposes, we can get a good idea of what the value of one of these generators does on a closed landfill. And then in six months, a year, we decide, hey, let's put three on or four on, which would be the capacity that would cover all of that landfill. Um, but as I said, let's not get ahead of ourselves. We just wanna demonstrate the technology locally and be able to do some financial studies around the, the benefits of electricity. The renewable energy credits and the carbon credits that maybe the county can generate. Again. We don't, we don't want to hamper any of your opportunity in generating revenue from it. What we need is, is actual techno, technical data. Um, long-run data.
Yeah, and the actual pad footprint, you're talking three by six feet, it's little.
Yeah.
And then we've fenced, give a little bit of room around. First off, we don't want people messing with it, we do have cameras, but I just think. Plus, I think it's good for a sign. And then we decided at that point when we have hard data to look at, that do we invest to the point once a return on our investment? But I think that's just a pretty small chunk to try.
Yeah, I like your plan as far as eventually looking to connect into the archery center.
And it's right there, the main box.
Here was, sixty or a hundred feet away.
Well, our main power, with power is still where it used to be. So that's in the edge of our B parking lot and we'd be running right to that. As a matter of fact, the conduit is still going to the ground, so we just gotta find the conduit. It's really not a long run, but I don't think it's valuable to put fifteen hundred or two grams in when we haven't turned it on.
No.
Let's, let's get an idea what that looks like.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent.
And Kurt, you wanna talk a little bit about some of the opportunities on the state level with carbon credits and also with some, just some good PR for the county and moving forward. Uh, from an economic development standpoint, because these guys are local and we are really, you know, been pushing this renewable energy in the county. This is a really good opportunity for the county to kind of, yeah, their feet wet with very, very little investment.
Absolutely, um, yeah, and I met Stephanie a couple of weeks ago and when she mentioned Keenerdy, I asked her, said, can you give me an introduction? Because it was interesting and I asked because last, because methane is the hot topic. And last week, I don't know if any of you attended the Wilkes Climate Summit at the University of Utah, it's the new, it was their first annual inaugural climate summit. It's a new building, new process, new, I guess, you know, track of education track they're doing at the University of Utah. And half of the summit was revolved around methane and methane capture and methane and, um, Utah Clean Energy's Logan Mitchell is, he's over the methane for Utah Clean Energy. And I kinda mentioned this, I knew we were talking about this and I said, hey, if we do something like this, I'd love to have you guys really promote this, like. Well, look what's being done at a local level here in Weber County. Look what, look what Weber County is doing to help capture methane. And, you know, with their resources to explain to the public, this is how bad methane is for the environment that most people don't even realize. And then really going around and I'd ask the, um, Wilkes Climate Center, because they're a new innovative center up there, to say, hey, would you guys help? You know, you could use this for educational purposes. Weber State would probably love to be involved. I know Utah State would love to be involved, talking with Brian Steed up there. Um, so I, you know, I think you could really. Get a lot of publicity around, this is how you should do a landfill right. This is how it should be closed, this is how to take advantage of the resources. And I think you could, you might donate renewable energy credits, depending on how much electricity you're producing. Um, carbon credits, you can get, uh, you have one, one ton of methane's got a twenty-five ton equivalent, uh, CO2 equivalent. Um, and what we do in our, in our business, we actually build a software that'll track for anybody, businesses, municipal, whoever. So you could actually look at it and say, here's the generation of carbon credits year over year. Here's, you know, you can play with the price escalation, how much methane, everything, you can do all that. But you could actually see where that was running on a, a day-to-day basis if you wanted to. So I, I think, just seeing where methane's coming with, if you look at the infrastructure reduction, um, bill or the IRA. The biggest, one of the big things they just put into there, we're working with in Ohio, Pennsylvania and all those states is the orphan wells, 'cause of methane. And those are very minimal. Those are probably a lot less than what you're generating in the landfill. And it's, they put, I think it was thirty-seven billion dollars behind that. Each state gets a certain allotment to all of those and it's a big. You know, methane is just starting to get a lot of publicity. So I think to be able to do this in the state. And I think you could show and get a lot of people to come look at this and say, yeah, this, we wanna do this, this makes a lot of sense.
Is anybody else in the state doing this?
We're actually the only technology in the world that does this.
So nobody else, no, their counties or landfill?
Yeah, this is it. Because, uh, I'm, I'm excited about the, the public-private partnership aspect of this.
Yeah.
The opportunity to test new technologies, build an ecosystem, as Stephanie and Sean and I have discussed. And also now, uh, novel economic models to kind of put that together. So this is actually a really great experimental incubator for people. And I think that actually helped the state and not the nation, because as, as Troy and I have discussed, um, people are just awakening to the fact that there's millions of abandoned wells out there. There are thousands, tens of thousands of closed landfills and the science is now telling us that these, even if you close it, that it will continue to admit for eighty years. It just keeps following this curve down. And so this technology, as Isaac's been explaining, is the only one that will go down this low and they're working on this. That will actually allow you to continue to create new energy from otherwise vented wasted methane. So we're very excited about this opportunity.
Yeah, and we're in the process of setting up meetings with the WEF and the Gibson Dairies to talk about doing some experimentation on them. And then even possibly up in Plain City with, uh, Mayor Beasley and his lagoon system, 'cause you can harvest off the lagoon systems too.
Yeah, what about Central Weaver?
Absolute best. And yes, and, and we are, we've already had a.
We've had a meeting.
Had, we've had a meeting with Central Weaver as well, 'cause their flaring, their flares are huge. That's, it's a lot.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so there's a lot of opportunities in Weber County for us to, to really go out and beta test this and then we would be the pioneers in the state and. Quite honestly, the nation for this type of, uh, local government, private pub, public partnerships, so.
Interesting part too, so my, my business partner that I started Barricarbon with is. Interesting part too. So my, my business partner that I started Better Carbon with is a guy named Dream Captain and he was. He was the corporate treasurer of Microsoft and kind of wrote their carbon credit rules and what they do and their, their goals. And out of all the credits that he sees. Methane was where he wanted to start. He says, I wanna start out in building all of our software and everything. He focused directly on methane. Cause you know, that, he thought that was probably one of the most important places to really target. So there's a lot of traction behind that thing right now.
Good.
Anyway, so really what we're asking is, uh, to do a resolution to support the, the beta testing out of, out of the landfill and maybe. Contribute a little bit of, uh, of, a little bit, a little bit of investment into the, into the, into the program to get it started and track.
Yeah, it's quite worth it. So. Legal and purchasing here, we run, running into roadblocks here.
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
Everything's fine until we have to start paying for stuff. So with the beta testing, we should be okay with the minimal expense to. Set up the concrete flat and the fencing enclosure to protect it and that sort of thing. It's all, those are small dollars.
Yeah. I, I think it'll be more than ten thousand, right, Tom?
Easily.
Oh, it'll be five hundred dollars.
Okay.
But if you wanna give me ten.
You'll spend it somewhere else, I know you.
Absolutely. And you'll never see it.
No, it'll disappear for the rest of my life.
Quinny's been looking at the agreement.
I've received the contract this morning. Uh, I've been reviewing it. It's, for the most part, it's. It's an unpaid partnership. So I think what we could focus on the most right now is that this is a. A testing phase of our relationship. Uh, they get some benefit out of the data that we produce when we have this. Generator operating on a landfill. We get the benefit of any energy that it happens to produce for us and we can use it how we want. At the end of the agreement, we can renegotiate a more permanent. Procurement and that's probably where Jason and I will come in and actually negotiate a longer term deal. But right now it's just kind of a twelve month short term. Uh, let's see what happens.
Twelve months, try.
Yeah.
Uh, I think that's the initial term that we.
Was twelve months, so, so the, the bare minimum expense would be five hundred bucks and you gotta generate free for twelve months. And then in twelve months, if you don't wanna use electricity, you can decide, hey, this. Thank you, but no thank you and we'll pick it up and we'll.
I think well within that window, we'll know that. And if we decided to benefit rewriting an agreement to step forward or step away, we'll come. Probably in that three to six month, month window. I think we'll, I'll be very aware of what's happening and then we make a choice again, but that window gives us time to make sure. We have a handle on what's going on and they can get us the info we need then.
Is there no concern? Is there a way to put some sort of electricity in like a light or something there to, to just to show?
So we were talking, uh, maybe doing, uh, doing parking lot lights off of it, but it'll, it, it creates grid parity power. So you can just run it right back into your electricity.
And we're trying to go to solar parking lot. That's what we have.
Up soon, it's solar out there.
People show up though and they're saying, how do I know this is prison electricity? I have lights. It's like, well, you know, that's, it's easy. It's very easy to just equip that you.
That's a good point.
Yeah, we'll get through the conversation if it works or not and we'll figure out how to make it look good.
Yeah, Todd and his group will figure it out. Well, listen to me like this, it's a win-win for everybody.
I think so too.
So, and you know, I think it's great that we got a local company.
Yeah.
Uh, to showcase this for us. I love that it's in Weber County, so we could take this to other counties across the state to show what, what Weber County is doing.
Yeah, I'm hoping to have it on our agenda for UAC.
All right. Do you have any issue with that?
I don't.
Okay.
We'll put the resolution together and get it on your agenda.
Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
I'm excited to see how this plays out.
Am I?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate.
And there's a phone app, so you, when you forget, you'll be able to say, this is what it's doing currently at the landfill. So.
Oh, yeah, there, it's all, it's all remotely monitored and you guys all have access to it. So you can log in on your phone and you can show people.
And I would suggest, Stephanie, that, uh, when, when we put that in, we should make sure that we.
Ribbon cutting, the whole.
Make sure that we get the rest there to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Showcase this.
We wanna showcase this with a media campaign throughout the whole.
This is kind of our first renewable energy. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thanks, Marty. See you.
Thanks, Stephanie.
I'm so, uh, Brandon just said, we're actually gonna put this as a contract for, not this, not tomorrow, but the next week we'll have as a contract.
For the resolution?
Yeah, instead of a resolution.
Yep, it'll be a contract.
What's their timeframe?
Um, they're gonna be starting.
Pretty, we want to get in before first snow.
Yeah.
It gets nasty to work in snow and land.
Yeah, so.
Oh.
So, June, July.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Hopefully we won't have any snow by then, but who knows? I'm not making any promises. Okay. Looks like we got some legal stuff coming up here. Is that what, you here for that, Jason?
The public relations marketing stuff?
Yeah, see, what did I?
I know, do you wanna talk real quick?
Yeah.
Can you stick around for five minutes? Yeah, if that allows. So regarding Kevin and Weber Housing Authority. They're the same as we would do with the health department. So if they ask us for help. We help them, but they follow our rules.
Yeah.
So I can send him.
Yeah.
A template and let him kind of go through that. I can send him examples of similar construction projects that we've done throughout the county, RFPs, RFQs, whatever else.
We just need, we just need to maintain control.
And I can provide a lending hand. He'll, he'll know that he has to follow county ordinance for that. Um. Yeah, it should be totally fine. I mean, we do this with the health department, CJC.
Yeah, perfect. So you.
Who, who is? I missed. It's, uh.
You'll get a hold, you'll get ahold of Kevin.
I can, yeah. You want me to?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, just reach out to him and say.
From Weber Housing Authority, wants some RFP help. On some construction stuff.
Oh, yeah.
And it's the same thing as the health department. If they ask for it, we can do it. If they follow our.
We follow our.
Yes, yeah, that's right. That was it. Right, less than five minutes. Oh, Scott Park is here.
Yeah.
For a second fee for that. That's, there's the caveat, charging a lot of money.
We can charge him whatever we want, we just turn around and give it to him.
Do we not give the housing authority purchasing services already in our agreement?
We give them some administrative services.
That's how I met Kevin.
Yeah.
They're pretty hands on. You can't charge him extra, sorry.
We don't charge him anything.
Or in case, case in point.
Yeah. Okay, let's start. Uh, this is our last agenda item for today. We'll be at three o'clock. Discussion regarding the public relations contracts. Chris and Scott Park. And Jason Horn.
So when we saw this, we weren't really quite sure. How it got on the agenda, um. But we wanted to at least provide you the most recent information. Uh, with regards to our marketing service contract. So if you remember previously. The, um. We, the county did an RFP and we selected three different firms.
Three, wasn't it?
Three different firms.
Yeah, I have their contracts.
Yeah, here, right. Uh, three different firms to handle our marketing services. That was with, uh, the D C O group, Heart and Soul. Uh, and Dragonfly.
Which is also mountains.
We sold mountains for it and then, uh, I think, uh, so that's all three of them. So those agreements were for one year and they were on an hourly basis rather than having it be, um. Uh, a flat fee, uh, which we had been built previously by D C O's flat fee. So we wanted to get away from that. So we had the three agreements. Those contracts have since expired. D C O had, uh, other separate agreements, um, with the county. One was with the sheriff's office. That contract has recently expired as well. Uh, I believe that one was for up to a hundred and twenty-five thousand per year.
Yeah, that's expired as well.
It should, yes, it expired.
Was there a limit on ours? This is a hundred and twenty-five a year?
We previously, before we did the RFP, had a contract which had a limit on it. It originally started something like around sixty thousand. Then it was amended to, there's like ninety thousand and then went to a hundred and twenty or a hundred and twenty-five thousand. So the county's contract that was structured like that went away and we entered into three contracts with these different firms. The sheriff's office still had his contract with, uh, the D C O group. Uh, during COVID, there were several other smaller contracts that were awarded for particular types of services. Uh, there have been other purchase order, uh, uh, requisition that have been made for like website services. Um, which in looking at the agreement, it's my opinion that they should have gone under our contract that we had with them already. Because there were particular billing rates that we were supposed to be adhering to. So a couple of those discussions were had, just to clarify. And then some people kind of went on their own and based on the dollar amount, we. We said, that's okay, or you know, maybe you should look into this, but there were a couple of. Maybe reach out and talk to them. So, and I know, uh, we reached out to Commissioner Bollos to ask if there were particular questions that she had. Uh, with regards to the marketing contracts and you'd asked for information regarding, um. How much has been spent, uh, over a particular number of years for D C O? And then also we were asked to determine what the equivalent of a county paid employee would be. To provide those same services in-house. For example, the health department has hired a public information officer. That's Laurie Botters.
Right.
So we just wanted to kind of present that information to you. Wherever the county commission decides to go, we do need to renew these contracts. Um, I don't believe, since we ventured the contract, any county department has utilized Dragonfly. Uh, or Heart and Soul, but had primary, uh, solely used. D C O. Um, there might be some different, uh, I think the fair might utilize a different company completely over their, uh, marketing.
Yeah, I couldn't find any payments to any one of those three other than the D C O group and.
But Og, Ogden Echols has their own. Marketing.
Ogden Echols says it's a marketing culture, cultural spike has their marketing.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
Are those employees?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, we pulled in, we actually created an employee for marketing, not for public information, but actually specifically.
For marketing. Just, what do they do with the? They'd use the same person for the ice sheet?
Uh, you know, I don't know. I don't know how they've structured it. I know they have.
Yeah, they got their own.
Yeah.
So the sheriff's office is the only one that's actually functioning as a contracted marketing.
Their contract has expired, but they're still operating.
Right, yeah.
But any other departments have an employee?
Yeah. Yes, so the commission and the jail are using the D C O group primarily as their service provider. Everybody else is using, uh, an employee unless it's a one-off project where we want the D C O group to go build this website.
Right.
And so what I did is I went through and calculated the payments. Um, Chris says, there's, okay, I'll just.
Yeah.
Um. I basically split off everything. We went to the Sherman Commission for the contract that was for marketing public information services. And then I pulled everybody else off that was like for a website, cause whether we pay the D C O group or a third party vendor.
Yeah.
Still gonna be a payment for a website. So for the last three years, um, we've been spending on average two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars a year. On the D C O group, um, over the whole course of our contract, then we've spent one point four million dollars.
Is that for both us and the sheriff's office, commission and the sheriff's office?
Yeah, so commission and the sheriff's office together, you've spent one point two. Everybody else combined spent just under two hundred thousand dollars. So it's primarily the D C O group serves you and the sheriff's office. Um, so just on average to the commission and the sheriff's office, two hundred and ninety-five thousand. So that's throwing out everybody else, just commission and sheriff. So then what I did is I went through just to see what that would cost in terms of an employee. I said, well, if we had a. Three full-time FTE, um, public information office. That would cost us about three hundred and fifty thousand a year, so fifty thousand dollars.
We had two or three?
Three, okay. If we had two full-time, it would cost us two hundred and sixty-three thousand. So we would actually be saving money. If we had two full-time county employees, if they could do the same work and I'm not, I don't know exactly what the D C O does. So I don't know if two people would do that. And if we had one point seven, so one full-time and then one three-quarter time, that costs us about two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars a year. So, uh, not, not being entirely sure what the question was, I just kind of plugged in some numbers based off of what the average public information officer would be. And a public information specialist too, to service the staff. Um. So, you know, if there's a question as to whether we pull that service in-house or not, I think depending on the scope of work they do, maybe there is an opportunity to save money. But then again, I don't know entirely everything that they're doing.
So here's the scope of work of what their current contract provides, that they're supposed to be billing us an hourly increments for. And that breaks it down into various types of services, um. And I, um, since we've started that, how is the billing going with that, Scott? Has it?
The billing doesn't have any of this detail.
Okay.
At all, ever, that I've seen.
So we've gone back and forth and I.
Doesn't have any detail, right? It's like a bill on thirty-four hundred dollars or whatever.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it's either super detailed within, so like a, a copy and paste from, this is like our entire detailed scope of work, but no units broken down.
That's missing.
Yeah.
I've seen a detailed list with no dollar amounts attached.
And that, that's the problem. So they're saying, here's this huge three, four pages worth of stuff that we do for you, but I.
It wasn't broken down in one of these categories.
Yeah, they, they'll list the categories, but.
But they won't, they don't do a unit price. So that's been our frustration with them. We've had this conversation probably a dozen times over. Our course of interaction with them and, you know, they've made some improvements and sometimes they haven't. I mean, it used to be one itemized, you owe us ten thousand.
Did the bills vary? As far as.
They do sometimes, yes.
They should.
Well, the sheriff's office bills don't vary very much, but.
I'm not, I mean, I'm not even interested in that right now.
Okay.
Can I jump in here?
Yeah.
This is, this is why I brought this up particularly now because. With all of the flooding information we've been talking about in the last two months.
Yeah.
It is so inefficient to try to tell someone what message we wanna send. And go through the whole process of. Writing, having them write something, we look at it, we rewrite it, they send it out. We're sitting in a meeting every week when a, a PIO could be sitting here and literally messaging. Right then.
Yeah.
It's so inefficient. And that's when I said, how much are we spending on this? Because. I did an internship with Clearfield City. When I was working on my masters. And they have an in-house, they have one and a half FTEs plus an intern. And that's cheap. One and a half plus an intern, that's cheaply.
Plus an intern.
Plus an intern, which is what I was doing when I learned about this and that office just sits right outside the, the, um. Assistant city manager's office. The office is right outside the conference room. My boss knew all the time what was going on. If they ever need to pull him in, they pull him in. Do you see where I'm going? Like, it, it was just so efficient to have it right there. And. I think.
So did they have?
Or less expensive.
Did they have the same? Skill set that we're seeing now, I mean, so they could do.
In my opinion, yes.
Okay, that's. And that was a discussion we've had in the past. Um, was, you know, would a PIO give us the same? Skill set, or do we end up having that person plus that having to go to marketing? So.
Uh, if you have the right people, I think.
So I guess that's.
Have the right people, you're gonna be more efficient.
I guess that's my question.
I mean. Gage, we talk about this at, at all of our, um, meetings with D C O. About newsletter articles or, or magazine articles. And, and I, this is nothing about Danny and the services. Danny's great.
Yeah.
But Danny's not sitting in our office and listening to everything. He writes something. We go, we go through the whole document. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah. No, I don't.
So inefficient for the amount of money we're paying.
I've been frustrated a little bit myself.
So. That's why, that's why I asked, Chris, when you said, what information would you like? That's why I asked for, what it would cost to bring in-house because. From my experience at Clearfield, it was just so efficient. And, and I look at what we're doing here and, and the dollars we're paying. There's, there's a real disconnect, I believe.
So between what we're paying, when I say we, the commission and the sheriff, you could actually hire two, based on your numbers, you could hire two.
Two full-time people.
Two full-time.
I assume when we make a hundred and five thousand a year, that would be the director and then another one at seventy-five thousand dollars a year. I just took those wages off of the average state. Paid for. That position, we may be able to get someone cheaper.
I was just gonna say, you could probably get a couple of students.
Well, yeah, so I just, I just went out and grabbed, what are we, what is the state paying these positions? And that's what I put down there. We'd wanna put it out to HR and have them do a market survey and see what. We potentially could get it cheaper than this. That's what I'm saying.
The thing is, the thing is, the in, public information office, they're. The, the messaging is what's so important. If you have a PIO, that person's in charge of the messaging. Anyone who works under that person is gonna, it's just gonna be a matter of. Their skills of technology, which is always changing. But I think that's why they use an intern at Clearfield because, you know, it's just really the, the work.
Uh huh.
You know what I mean? It's the groundwork that we did.
Yeah. No, I.
I don't know. That's, that's why I asked for that information because. I, I just think it's, it would be a lot more efficient.
Okay.
And we don't currently have contracts, so it's a perfect time to look at that and consider that.
I don't disagree a hundred. Yeah, I don't disagree at all. So we probably ought to have the sheriff as part of this conversation too, or you should.
Okay.
Well, we can bring him in here.
I know.
But it is your portfolio, so.
And, and.
Well, I.
May, maybe he keeps his contract and, and we have someone in-house. I don't know. Just looking from our office perspective, I know he has a different. Opinion.
So let's do this.
Contracted services.
Let's turn this over to Sarah. Tell her to just do some research, what kind of the market study would show for. Uh, a person that would have the skill sets that could do what they're saying they're doing. Which is really social media and. You know.
It's really not, it's, it's not that complicated.
It's, no, it's really not. I agree.
And, but a lot of what they do on here, if I could say it. They are very good at certain things.
They are.
And they are. Okay at other things, but they represent the expertise is the whole gamut. And so like on those videos, sometimes like the election videos, like we couldn't use them. They were so. Bad quality. Now, that doesn't mean it's just a group. I mean, we can get a video produced. A lot cheaper than a hundred dollars an hour. If, if that's just what we're doing, is just producing a video. So. If we have them doing the, what they're really good at, I mean, they're really good at some things and that's their skill set. I think that's where we use them. But a lot of these other things that are like building the website. You know, when we were doing the cares website, I know Mr. Bond's frustration was, we had to produce all the content. We had to then go back and edit it. It would have been faster for us to do it ourselves.
That's what we found.
Um, yeah, I don't.
So, but I'm, I'm just saying, but in that instance, but they had the social media contact, which none of us knew how to do. So if we use them in their appropriate lane for their appropriate thing, I think we have the expertise. In IT or other places to, to fill any gaps.
Well, another issue I think with having three, and we're currently functioning with one, there's no competition. And I don't know how long that's been going on, cause I, I'm new here.
Well, we did this, we did the three. Uh, a year ago, obviously.
Ever use the other two?
Definitely were.
So you know what I mean? If you have three, the purpose I would think to having three is so that they'll all be, you know. Functioning in their, their best. Wheelhouse. This is where I'm the expert and this is where, we're just using one. So, so we're not getting the best product probably for, for all of our services. And there's no competition in pricing at all.
When you could structure it in a way where if you brought in-house and, and had created a county employee position, you can still have these contracts of three. And if there's a particular, particular service. Uh, where we need a little bit more expertise and we could go to that contract, pay the hourly rate.
Yeah.
And then just have it funnel through the PIO.
I think that would be fantastic.
Yeah, and that's what I was talking about. There's certain things we can do in-house, great. There's certain things that just beyond our expert, like social market, I don't know if we have a social media expert, you know, but. Something like that, then that's where you reach out to one of these three contractors and say, this is what we need.
So the jail expansion is one example, right? If we had somebody in-house at this point in time, I would not. I would never even imagine putting that on them, that marketing at all. That's totally specific and, and you know, the, the company that is doing, that we were, that we awarded the. Design to. Part of their, part of their proposal was the marketing. That's what they do. We wouldn't have Dichi do that. We certainly wouldn't have somebody in-house. That's one of those, I love that setup. I'd, I'd be great to have in-house. Just on the jail expansion.
Oh, on the jail expansion.
Right? If you have an in-house person, you would expect them to do that. That's way outside of their expertise. So having contracts in place, I think would be great, but having, having a, a team in-house would be. A lot more efficient for all the mainstream.
Then they could come to the, the commission, uh, or whoever oversees that particular department that have the budget. And just say, in this particular instance, we need this additional service for this particular project. And then they use funds from that budget, but it's funneled through a county employee.
Yeah, I would say that if we set up a PIO office, then that would operate under the commission and have a line item budget for additional marketing services or additional.
So we would just set that position up similar to what we've done with Stephanie for economic development.
Yeah, you'd be over the budget. We'd track it separately, so.
We just create that as a separate budget line item.
But they would report to whoever of the three of you just you decided that.
And there was, yeah, and Scott saying, then there would be maybe a, a. Budget item for contracting services if they need to go out. If that department says, well, we can't handle this, this is not. You know, this is not our expertise. This is a jail expansion. We don't know anything about it.
Yeah.
Sure, or jail, or COVID, or cares.
Yeah, whatever.
Some big thing that comes that we don't do normally, but yeah, hopefully eighty percent of the stuff we could do internally.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least.
Good. There'd be the logistics, uh. It is it countywide? Uh, or is it a PIO officer for just the, the commission office? I'm not quite sure how that would.
I don't know.
That's, that was my next question is. You know, the part that's frustrated me a little bit is all this, you know, the health department has their own now, you know, Ogden Echols has their own. Uh, Gold Spike has their own. Wouldn't we better, be better to have? One person or when I say one person, maybe a department be in charge of that? Or do they all need their own? Body?
I kind of see it maybe like Quinn. Quinn is over technology, but the library has their own technology staff. The sheriff has their technology staff, but they kind of dotted line. Not directly. So Quinn doesn't do their evaluations. They actually work for the library and Linda. Um, but even with accounting, you know, I work, even though they don't report to me, I work with. Probably fifteen different people, you know, to make sure that the accounting is done correctly. So I think we could set up that similar type of relationship as long as, you know, the commissioner support whoever this person is to make sure that transition is clear that. Jennifer's person in Golden Spike is going to work with.
With you.
With the PIO.
That's, yeah, and if they need their own, I don't, I'm not trying to eliminate that position, but it would be nice to have. One person consistent. So if we, if we had an issue with Golden Spike. We could go or you could go to our person and say, look, you know, tell us what's going on out there. Just so there needs to be a line of communication.
Yeah.
Between those groups, in my opinion. Cause so that way, because you're impacting the entire county, the message, you know, I don't want a message coming out of the Golden Spike that we're going, what the heck's up with this? You know, this is a.
See, that's another benefit to being in-house because they'd all be working together and communicating together. And we, it would all go through one, not necessarily through, but one person would be aware of all that.
I think another benefit would be ownership of product. I mean, by contract, we own all of the products. I mean, anything that. Uh, one of these groups puts out there with regards like our social media page, like we, we are the owner of that content, but how we access that and update it.
Currently.
That's, there's a huge delay and we would pro, I don't even know if like the contract was terminated, we needed to ask like, what's our passwords or what's?
Yeah, that's my favorite of those websites, like the translation and those other ones. I don't even know that we. Own the website URLs. I'm, I mean, while we may have a right to them. I don't know that we actually have them in our name. Like you said, I don't know if we would be able to control them without a, a legal document if this contract went bad. We would have to.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Uh, we, we'd have Quinn make sure that it, it meets all of our IT standards if we're gonna be, uh, setting up a website.
Sure.
Yeah.
So there, there is some risk to that. And I talked to, to Quinn about that is, you know, we have all these different entities with different portions that represent Weaver County website.
Mm-hmm.
But we wouldn't even know how to take them over if the contract went south and we had a dispute and they didn't give us the username.
We should probably find that out.
Media wise, I don't think we have access to anything.
You don't think.
I don't think Shelley even knows.
Really?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, our org chart, in order to update our org chart, I have to send a request and then it goes to them and then they send it off, then it comes back a, a week or two later. And it's like, I just wanted to change the, the name.
You see what I'm saying?
It was a big deal that comes with that too. Be really easy to just change that.
But it should be our document, right? I mean, it should be our document saved in.
That's not our document.
Well, it may be statute, or I mean, maybe legally we have a right to, but. In operation, I request a change. It goes out to them. They make the change on their time frame. It comes back to the.
With the bill.
Send it to me.
With the bill, yeah, no, I get that.
And it's like, just, I just wanna change the name.
I get that.
Mister Jenkins is gone and you could say Commissioner Bollos, that's all I need.
Okay, well.
Yeah, but I, but it, it just, it starts with the conversations that we have every week and, and especially with the magazine and our newsletter articles and. It's, you know, again, nothing on Dichi, but it's just, there's not enough information in that individual's head to just go out and write what we need to write.
Yeah.
We have to, we have to relay that every time and fix it.
Mm-hmm.
And sometimes twice or three times.
And the, and the part that I. Have always kind of liked about in-person is look, if we've got an issue that comes up now.
Right now.
We're not gonna set up a meeting for next week. We, we want to walk in somebody's office. Like I do with Stephanie and say.
Pull them into a meeting.
Get on it.
We think about our flood update meetings. If that person is sitting right there. And we can, you know, Gary can say, we need to get this out.
Yeah.
I don't even think we even.
Yeah.
Have or use an Instagram account. And our Facebook is just.
Well, we better first find out what our legal. Rights are to our content.
Well, the, the legal rights are, we have, we own it.
Okay.
We can demand that they give it.
We have the legal rights, but we don't have the username and password.
But how do we get access to it?
So I can reach out to Quinn and I'll ask him to reach out to the Dichi group and make sure that we have a comprehensive.
Yeah.
Uh, all the IP addresses, the URL, everything that we have that they've done for us. Um, so, and then I'll also.
Including passwords.
Username and passwords, including social media. Um, and then I'll also ask Sarah to review this calculation and see if she can just validate whether these are right amounts for what it cost. And then bring that back in. You can.
That would be great.
See the, you know, see what it would cost you internally.
You okay with that?
That would be great.
I'm assuming you are, since it's your idea.
That's out of the bag?
I like it. No, I. We've had, we've had this discussion before and. It's timely that we do it now. Uh.
We need to talk to the sheriff as well.
Yeah.
But the sheriff's a big part of this.
I can talk to him.
And maybe it's, uh, creating two positions, one at the county and then the other one out at the sheriff's office.
Um, well, like building inspection works out, works for operations, but they're out assigned to the jail. I mean, I can see something similar that this position reports to the commission, but their primary role is assigned out there. So we, we have several instances where that's working in the county well. So I, I, I see it being something similar.
And I, I think the sheriff probably. Needs their own person, but very similar. Quinn, you know, when we send our person out, they're still under property management. They're, they're not under the sheriff. They're in the house. Which I think it should be.
And Sean can make changes if he needs to.
And so if we need to make a change in that body, we can, right?
I would really like to know everything the sheriff uses Dichi for. How do we get that information?
That's.
Is that a question? You're not.
That's a good question.
That doesn't tell me anything.
Um, I, we would have to ask the sheriff.
Maybe I'll just try to do that, could I ask?
They put together some videos.
I wanna ask him, hey, if you had an employee. What would that look like?
Yeah.
You know what I mean? Like, would they be sitting in your office forty hours a week?
Part of the sheriff's.
Way to go about that.
Contract was to fund somebody from Dichi to, their primary assignment was to work with the sheriff's office. So very similar.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, I can get you a copy of that.
Stop shaking your head.
I'm just reading the invoice.
I don't want you to shut your laptop.
I can get you a copy of that contract. That's expired. And then I was having guys say, uh, just sit down with the sheriff.
I would like to just ask him, like, here's the contract. What do you? What if he only needs a twenty-hour-a-week person? Do you know what I mean? Like.